Everybody had pizza. It was pretty good. I am a pizza guy. It's my go-to. I had a piece of pizza before lunch.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is the Board of Supervisors meeting Monday, April 11th, 2022. I'd like to call the meeting to order and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll do a roll call. Mr. Bell?
Here.
Ms. Kircher?
Here.
Mrs. Reeser?
Here.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes, here.
I'm Carl Staples. I'm here. Before we get started, I want to let you know that we had an executive session tonight, and we talked about real estate issues, personnel, and litigation. So what we'll do now is move into public comments as it pertains to the agenda items. First up would be Mr. White Hawk. You signed this one?
I read the wrong one.
It's okay. You want to wait and?
I'll wait. I'll wait.
Then next is Bob Hoffman.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Bob Hoffman. I live at 144 Fairmount Avenue in the township. Thanks for giving me the opportunity to address the board and my fellow residents. I've been a taxpayer of Exeter for over 50 years, spent the first 20 of years of my life in Philadelphia. So by comparison, this is a great place to live, worship, raise a family, and enjoy the many benefits of this community. I'd like to, since I hadn't had the floor before, I want to congratulate the new supervisors in hopes that you'll serve our township to the best of your ability. I want to remind everybody of the dedication and courage of our first responders who risked their lives to protect us every day. As a member of the Exeter Township Volunteer Fire Department, I would encourage the supervisors to keep an open mind regarding a new modern facility. Also, I'd like you to come up to Reifton if you want to visit with me. Also, the police department is working from a trailer, and the KCBA report from November 20 describes in detail the condition of this facility and other township facilities. In fact, my former employment, I've visited many municipalities. We don't need to build the Taj Mahal, but a new facility would attract new residents and businesses who recognize we are willing to invest in our community. I submit that we should have the vision to look ahead and plan for the future. But I wanted to make comments about the Reading Country Club, which is an agenda item. I wanted to suggest that the supervisors might want to visit Springfield Township in Delaware County. The township owns the golf course, and Marriott built a hotel next to the course. They are booked with weddings and many events in cooperation with the golf course. Imagine, if you will, a beautiful hotel next to the Reading Country Club. Imagine the increase in memberships. Imagine the increased revenue. I think it's sad to hear. Excuse me. I think it's sad to hear some folks say they drive by the Reading Country Club, and there's nobody on the course. That may be true of playgrounds and recreation areas as well. They are not always in use. New York City has Central Park, but you don't hear people wanting to sell the park to developers. Reading Country Club is a landmark. Imagine our township with a destination country club and a hotel along with a modern township facility. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda, and this is a, we would consider a motion to approve the consent agenda. It's approval of special meeting minutes, March 21, approval of the minutes for March 28, 2022. Now, we have some names that we need to adjust in that, so we may want to table the 28th minutes until we have it correct, and then approve dispersments for April 11. Questions?
None. Thank you.
Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make that. Oh, go ahead. I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second it then.
All in favor, say aye.
Well, just a point of clarification. So on the consent agenda, are we approving the March 28 minutes as part of that, or are we going to table that?
We're going to table that.
Okay, all right.
All in favor of approval of the special meeting, March 21, 2022, minutes, and the dispersments for April 11? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, fine. Next on the agenda is zoning and planning. Will?
Yeah, sorry. Give me one second.
Okay. This, the first issue is discussion and a motion to approve Resolution 2022-14, approving service electric Exeter Township preliminary slash final land development plan.
Good evening. I'm Donald with Boja Engineering. We're the site engineers for this project. I think you're familiar with service electric. It's a pretty straightforward building addition for them to expand their internet service provisions. The main addition on there is what they call a head end. It's actually unmanned, just computer equipment. There's no additional traffic loads, nothing extra being added as for that. The other addition is a second-floor office, so they could spread their people out that are there. We've worked with the planning commission, added landscaping to the parking lot. We're offering dedication of an additional 10 feet of right-of-way along the frontage. All our engineer comments are satisfied, and signed, sealed plans are sitting in your offices, ready for you. So I'm looking for a motion for approval, preliminary, and final.
Thank you for your comments. The Township Planning Commission has recommended a conditional plan approval. Is that correct, Will?
That is correct. There were no adverse comments.
Okay. So is there a motion to approve Resolution 2022-14?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is discussion and possible action on plan review requirements. Five. Five, oh, five zero. Next item is discussion and possible action on plan review requirements for Central Berks Regional Police proposed garage at Antietam Valley Municipal Authority.
All right. So the Central Berks Regional Police Department is looking to construct a garage over at the Antietam Valley Municipal Authority, which is down, is on Butter Lane, down the street from the Liberty Tap Room. The reason that this is before you tonight is that technically this falls under land development. So the municipal authority is, their, their facility treats sewage, is a sewage treatment facility, because the use would change on the property, or it would continue and then have an additional use on the property. It would fall under our zoning ordinance for land development. The planning commission discussed this item during the March meeting. They recommended to the Board of Supervisors that a waiver be granted, and that outstanding areas of concern, such as landscaping, lighting, and stormwater, be addressed at the building permit process, at the building permit process. If this proposed garage would be for the municipal authority, it would only be required to go through a building permit process. Tonight, in attendance, we have Chief Ray Seraphin of the Central Berks Regional Police Department, as well as a board member of the municipal authority, if they would like to provide any additional details.
Right. Any additional, would you like to make a comment?
I'd just like to make everybody aware.
Step to the mic, please.
Thank you for having me, by the way.
Yes.
Our proposed facility that you see to the right of the existing building with the garage doors there, our purpose is to house vehicles that are going to be processed as evidence. There will be no outside storage. It's all inside storage for this facility. We would like to make sure that the landscaping is going to cover as much as this, as it can around this fence. It will be a fenced area going completely around the building, six-foot high fence, and are provided blocking the view of most of the building, except for where the gate check is.
Right.
The lighting, we will only have lighting at the front door, at the front door, which is located to the right of the larger garage door. It would be just a regular outside light. That will be all the lighting for the outside that we would need.
Okay.
As far as pervious and impervious parts of this building, the only part that we're going to pave would be in the front of the building approximately, it's about 30 feet, I believe, coming off of the driveway, the existing driveway that is there. Our impervious total footage, square footage, is roughly about 3,600 square feet with, with the driveway.
Okay.
There will be no paving alongside or the back of the building, only in the front to get to the access to the doors.
Great. Thank you for your explanation. Appreciate that. So is there a motion to, to grant this?
What are you, you're asking us?
Tonight, we're asking the board to make a motion to grant a waiver from the formal land development process and allow township staff to review any outstanding issues such as stormwater, lighting, landscaping during the building permit process.
Okay. I can't repeat what you said, but so moved.
I'll second it.
Comments? Not?
Are we, are we waiving the fees, or are we waiving inspection?
We're not, we're not waiving any fees or inspection. It's still going to go through the process, the formal process. We're just waiving the, the additional steps for land development. So it's still going to go through the building permit process. The, we're going to review any potential stormwater issues, lighting issues, landscaping issues.
Got it. Very good. Thank you.
So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Five up. Okay. Next on the agenda is discussion and possible action on waiver of building permit fees for 1210 Broadway Avenue.
We received a waiver request from Little Acts of Love. They are a nonprofit organization that assists the disabled, elderly, and veterans do home projects. This project is over in the Pennview Mobile Home Community, which is next to, located next to Carsonia Park. The app, the waiver request is for the waiver of building permit fees. The permit fees would probably be about $300. Little Acts of Love, I believe, is doing this at no cost for the residents of the Broadway property, and any waiver request need to come before the board.
Okay. So what they're asking for, since they're doing the work for free, correct?
Yep.
At no cost, and they're asking us to also support them in that effort as far as helping these families, correct?
That's correct.
So is there a motion to waive the building permit fees for 1210 Broadway Avenue?
I'll make a motion to waive the permit fees for 1210 Broadway Avenue.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions?
Yes, I oppose waiving the fees. I have a number of reasons. Little Acts of Love is working out in Wordsboro, Pennsylvania, and they are doing this for free, but they're using volunteers and student labor. I don't have any problem with that at all, okay? But the problem that I do have is that, first of all, waiving fees, waiving, waiving fees are not in our budget. Now, we expanded the tax base. Everybody complained about paying more taxes, and we expanded the tax base because we were, had over almost a million-dollar shortfall in revenue. So we got rid of the Hometown, Homestead Act, and everybody was still getting over that. And then we also had to raid the, the reserve for $175,000 to still bu, balance the budget. So we're going to waive these fees, okay? And I think that we're going to have another fee that we're going to waive pretty soon in the agenda for like $1,500 for a sports club. So, you know, you annualize that just once a month. That's like 20-some thousand dollars right there. We, we charge the fees to cover our costs. That's what we really do. We're not trying to make a profit here, okay? And if you also do this, then I have a nonprofit I want to start where I'm going to, I'm going to represent everybody on my, on their behalf to come here and just ask us to waive the fees. It's a precedent, sort of, you know? And it'd be very difficult to say no to anyone else. If we're not going to charge the fees, let's just get rid of the fee schedule. That's, that's my opinion. That's my position. It's only $300. It's not the money. It's the precedence that we're going to set, and we're going to have another one coming up here very shortly. Thank you.
Any other comments? So there's, is, there's a motion then on the floor and second to waive the fees for 1210 Broadway Avenue. So all in favor, say aye.
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 No.
Four one. Next is a discussion and possible action on waiver requests for stormwater management section 320-27B related to stormwater facility design at 1080 Lomkill Road.
So this is a proposed new dwelling with a new driveway and, you know, all the, all the fixings essentially. They are required to do a stormwater management plan, which essentially controls any of the stormwater that is created through the impervious area to be controlled on the site. At the, at the top of this plan here, you can see that there is a stormwater basin labeled a proposed rain garden. We often, our SALDO ordinance addresses stormwater. Our SALDO and our Act 167 ordinance addresses stormwater. However, it's not a one-size-fits-all lang, type of language. It's more geared towards large subdivisions as well as commercial land development, so that when you get these small stormwater plans that are designed, sometimes certain things such as pipe size and berm size do not fall, do not meet the criteria that's in the language. Just for instance, the pipe size from the rain meters to the basin, I believe, is four inches. I think our ordinance calls out at least eight inches in diameter size, and then the berm size of that proposed pond there, I believe, is about two or three feet. Obviously, that doesn't meet large-scale development detention ponds. So this plan has been reviewed at least twice by the township engineer. It satisfies every comment through the revisions, except for meeting section 320-27B, which addresses the certain dimensions and sizes of, of the facility. So township staff are recommending that the Board of Supervisors approve the waiver request from section 320-27B.
Okay. Is a motion, is there a motion on the, to, to make this waiver of 320-27B?
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Motion's been made. Is there a second?
I can second it.
Been motion and a second. Any comments or questions?
Will, is this a residential area? I'm not familiar with what this address is.
Yes, this is up, it's actually on the, the border of Ole Township and then Exeter. It's rural in nature, and it's a, just a parcel that has been undeveloped.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, five up. All right. Next is discussion and possible action on variance requests from front yard setback requirement at 4A Sycamore Drive.
The, the zoning hearing board receives an application for, for, for A Sycamore Drive. The Board of Supervisors, as well as the Township Planning Commission, have the ability to provide recommendations to the zoning hearing board. That's why this is before you tonight. The applicant at 4A Sycamore, so their rear yard is technically their front yard. So when the, the property was subdivided, the area along Sycamore Drive has the front yard setback. Now, the proposed enclosed deck does not meet that front yard setback. They are seeking, I believe, nine foot of relief. So a little bit of explanation on the front yard setback dimensions. The Sycamore Drive is about 30 feet wide, and then on top of that is a 60-foot right-of-way. So 15, you divide the 30 in half, you get 15 foot of right-of-way on each side of the road. So you measure 15 feet back from the curve line is where the right-of-way ends, and technically their front yard begins. So then, in our zoning, per zoning ordinance, the, the principal structure, which is the house, needs to be third, at least 30 feet from 15 feet off the curve line. With the enclosure of a deck, it would not meet the, that requirement, so they are seeking relief from that section. The Board of Supervisors, as I previously mentioned, has the ability to recommend denying the application, recommend approving the application, or providing no comment.
What's the?
Uh, this 15-foot area is where more than likely, if ever it happens, you put in a sidewalk, right? Is that part of the reason for the setback?
Uh, that's the idea behind right-of-ways sidewalk utility work.
Right. Because I, I had the same thing in, in my front yard. Someday, you might put a sidewalk in there. So if they put a sidewalk in, then how much closer is it going to be to their?
I believe they are seeking, they're seeking nine feet of relief, so they'd be 20, 21 feet from, from that 15. But the way their property is laid out, it's, from the road, it goes up to pretty steep embankment that's, has large, large stone there. So I don't think ever in the future, not to say that it couldn't happen, I just don't think that a sidewalk is feasible in that location.
And overall, how would, how would this addition look compared to the rest of the neighborhood? Do a lot of other homes have?
I don't think, I don't think it would be detrimental to the look of the neighborhood. The area sits up pretty high from the roadway and then is surrounded by landscaping, by, by vegetation.
Is there, are like, what, five questions that you guys asked yourselves when you, what, what are those five questions?
Five criteria to prove a hardship, and I, I'm not going to be able to quote all five, but that, you know, you didn't create the hardship yourself, that you...
That it fits into the, the neighborhood?
Character, yeah.
And that's the one I'm, I'm asking about. If I drive by there, am I just going to like, just say, oh, great neighborhood?
I don't think, if they were approved for this variance, I don't even think anyone would notice.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
So is there a motion to approve the variance request from the front yard setback requirement at 4A Sycamore Drive?
Or we could just send to you that we have no comment, right?
That's been past practice of, of the Board of Supervisors.
So we have no comment.
Okay.
Uh, next is a discussion and motion to approve release of remaining escrow funds in the amount of $77 for Hafer/ Kern subdivision two.
The Board of Supervisors, a few months ago, had approved the subdivision for the Hafer Kern subdivision two. It was a pretty simple subdivision. Essentially, what they were doing was just moving a lot line. At the beginning of a subdivision process, the applicant will post an escrow, usually about $3,000. This covers any engineer legal fees during the, during the process. There is a remaining balance of $77, and so I believe some change that needs to be returned to the applicant, and we need approval from the board to do that.
Okay. I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next is a discussion and motion to approve a time extension dated April 7, 2022, for 3901 Perkyomen Avenue land development plan.
This is a project that has been on the books for, I believe, two years. This is for the development, redevelopment of the building that was next to the old Radio Shack. I believe it's going to be some type of retail establishment. They will likely be before the board, excuse me, the planning commission during the, this April meeting. I believe essentially all items in the review letter have been addressed, so likely the planning commission will recommend plan approval for, to the Board of Supervisors at the next meeting. Township staff request that the 90-day extension be granted.
And it looks like they need the extension because of PennDOT? Is that, because they're waiting on?
There, there were several PennDOT issues. The township specifically can't hold up approval of the plan based on PennDOT, based on outstanding comments from PennDOT, but PennDOT has been one of the outstanding issues.
Okay.
Regarding the egress and ingress and egress of the property.
Gotcha.
Okay. So a motion to, to approve this time extension?
I'll make a motion to approve the time extension for, dated 4/7/2022, for 3901 Perkyomen Avenue land development.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 Next is the discussion and motion to approve a time extension date at 4/6/2022 for 6590 Sunset Manor land development plan.
All right. And this was, this is a commercial development back, pretty much adjacent to the Old Sheets location. They proposed to do a commercial truck repair business. I did speak with the property, the applicant, end of last week, and they are going to be moving forward with this land development. They were just, they had some issues they had to work out regarding the latest review letters. So again, they're requesting a time extension for the plan.
And that's all they're asking for at this time?
Correct.
It's just time?
I'll, I'll make a motion to giving them a 90-day time extension till they solve the problem.
All right. Is there a second?
Go ahead.
Thanks. That's an exciting one. I'll second it.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you very much.
Thank you, Will.
Thank you.
Next up is Public Works. First, the item is discussion and motion to approve authorized purchase of two 2022 Chevrolet Tahoe police vehicles at a cost of $61,500 each. All right?
So we have budgeted two police cars this year out of the equipment fund, and what we were going to do with that, we were going to replace three vehicles. Two 2010 Ford Explorers and one 2013 Ford Explorer. So we'd be purchasing two to get rid of three. The car itself cost $42,896. Then we also wrapped the doors, and we do the decals. What we used to do before was, we used to have the cars painted white at a cost of $2,200, just for the white paint, and then we had the decals. We went with the wrap and the decals, and that came to a total of $1,585. So there's a savings right there from painting it to doing the decals or the wrap. After, we would like to get rid of the car, what we could do is we could pull the wrap off, and then we would be selling one solid color car. Right now, when we sell them, or we used to sell them, they were black and white. People were buying them and pretending that they were police. So a few years ago is what we did is, we wouldn't sell them anymore. We took what parts we could use off of them, and then after they were completely basically stripped, we recycled the car with a scrapyard. The lights and sirens in that car also cost $16,614.88. That is everything. That is his lights, sirens, the radios, the GPS system that's in there for the county, and also the watch guard, the, for the police officer to have a camera, and also a microphone on him as he's talking to individuals. officer to have a camera, and also a microphone on him as he's talking to individuals. Um, that's about it for the cars, so I didn't know if you had any questions.
Okay. Any questions?
Uh-uh.
Is there a motion to approve authorization of purchase of two twenty twenty-two Chevrolet Tahoe police vehicles at a cost of sixty-one thousand five hundred dollars each?
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of two twenty-twenty-two's Chevy Tahoe police cars at a cost of sixty-one thousand five hundred dollars each.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.
Next is discussion and authorization to sell on the munisit bid?
Municid, yes. It's an auction site used throughout the United States. Uh, pretty much all state agencies use it, uh, to get rid of their surplus where it's advertised throughout the whole United States, not just this area. Uh, we do very well with it. Uh, last year, we did sell a few pickup trucks and stuff like that on there, and, uh, it was pretty much amazing on some of the stuff, uh, some of the money we got for some of the stuff we sold. We did receive a grant last year to purchase two new leaf loaders, which we received in September. So last year, we had seven leaf loaders running around, which really helped us keep up with the leaves. What we're looking to do is get rid of the, the old one, which is also the problem one, so we will have six instead of seven.
So there's, all you gotta do is sell it and try to bring in as much money as you can?
Yes. Uh, all I do is, uh, basically take the pictures of it, put all the information on the website, and every so often, uh, somebody will ask me a question of, uh, what engine is in it, uh, which fuel does it run, how big is it, uh, stuff like that, which is pretty much in the description of it, but, uh, they'll email a question. Um, some people wanna come and see it, take a look at it here at Ron, and, uh, after the auction's over, I'm notified of, uh, the person, person that purchased it, and then we arrange for the title to be transferred and money to be exchanged, so...
And once the money's exchanged, then they get to take possession of the...
Yes, yes.
I'm just curious, Larry, do we set like a, a minimum? Like, how does that work? And like, how long does the auction go?
Uh, well, you, you can actually set the auction for as long as you want. Normally, what we do is about two weeks. Um, we let it on there for two weeks. We can do a minimum price. Um, for something like this, you might see a minimum of a thousand dollars. Um, anything over, I think it's roughly, what, six grand, uh, we would have to give back to the state due to, it was a grant fund that we purchased it from.
Ah, gotcha.
So we're allowed to keep the ten percent of the cost that we purchased, but anything above that would have to go back to the state.
Gotcha. Thanks.
Any other questions?
I don't know.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, so the motion is to approve the sale of the, how do you say that again?
Um, munisit bid.
Oh, munisit bid, yeah.
Right. Twenty-eleven ODB Leaf Act. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 All right.
Thank you.
Next up is Parks and Recreation. Discussion and possible action on fee waiver requests for the Exeter United Football Club, right? Is that right, Beck?
Yes, it is. It's a soccer club, youth soccer. Um, so this, we had this in our fee schedule in twenty twenty-one as well, and there were a couple, the, the fee waiver is for our Exeter-based, Exeter Township-based youth sport organizations. We had a few that used it last year, um, and, you know, th- this is kind of new to most of our board, because you've not seen this before. Um, so this is one of the first requests coming up for our soccer club. They practice in the spring as well as the fall. Um, typically, our request, you know, if they're going to, it's not something we promote, but if they would like to use that, I, I ask them to do it just once a year. You know, they're not doing it for their whole time period. Last fall, I believe, um, they did get a fee waiver in the fall, but they paid sixteen hundred in the spring for when they played. They, uh, they wanted to be here tonight to kind of show their support for the request, but unfortunately, with the great weather that we're having, finally some dry weather, uh, their, most of their board members are also coaches, so they're out playing tonight. But you will see that each of the board members, just as the meeting was getting started, they sent over a letter, and they asked if I wouldn't mind sharing that with you tonight. "The Exeter United Soccer Club would like to thank you for your consideration of waiving the field usage fee. By reducing this burden on our club, you are helping us to keep our programs affordable for our township families. This goes a long way in enriching the lives of the children in our community. We take pride in representing Exeter by providing quality coaching and guidance for our youth. We do regret that we are unable to send a representative to the, to the meeting this evening. We would have loved to thank you in person and answer any questions you may have. Unfortunately, our club is in the middle of our spring season, and most of our board members are out coaching tonight. And then they have a contact information if you have any questions. Thank you again for your time and enabling us to provide the best possible youth soccer programming to our great community. Sincerely, the United, um, Exeter United, um, F.C., Board of Directors." I can answer any questions that you may have, too.
Okay, questions?
So based on what you're...
Oh, go ahead.
Oh, sorry. So based on what you're saying, Becky, um, they would, wouldn't apply for this in the fall?
Correct, yes. I- if you've gotten a chance to see our fee schedule, it was added on there, I, looks like in twenty twenty-one, and it's only for Exeter Township-based youth organizations.
Right.
We have some youth organizations, like a Berks County Rugby Group, they are not Exeter-based, so they pay the fee. We have adult groups that come in and use our facilities, and they pay the regular fee.
Gotcha. Thanks.
Okay, uh, this is a, a favorite project of one of our former township supervisors who has fortunately moved out of the area. Uh, I have a list here. Did anybody here look at the list of the dates that they're gonna practice? I assume these are the practice dates of the fields, correct?
They, they're practicing pretty much all week long at Farming Ridge Park, Pineland Park, and Trout Run.
Yeah, yeah.
But they have a variety, they have a varied schedule based on, you know, which teams are practicing, which nights at which location.
Right, and, uh, so do, uh, I mean, there's a lot of, of practice dates here, and do they, do they charge the kids anything to participate in this program?
I do not know that answer.
I'm sure they do, okay? If they, if they, if they decide to give all the money back to the kids that participate, I might think about waiving the fees, okay? But look, if we're gonna waive the fees for the soccer, the soccer program, then we have to do it for football, flag football, baseball, all the different leagues. Again, I implore my colleagues not to, not to do this. This, this money isn't like profit for us. People are gonna have to go out and maintain those fields, and if you open up the Exeter United F.C. and you can see all the dates that they're scheduled, I mean, there's, there's tons of them, okay? And the reason why there's no fee in the fall is because it's not really used that much in the fall, okay? It's, it is the springtime where they're most active. So I don't know why we're even enter, uh, look at the, look at this one page here, look at that, you know, you can see all the dates they're gonna have, that's at Farming Ridge. Somebody's go, gotta go out and maintain those, and I think the fee is fifteen hundred dollars. It's not unreasonable. So, uh, I would say, once again, tell them thank you, but no thank you on this matter.
Just, just to keep going, though, in the, the part of this is to, there is a cost associated for the families that kids participate in this, is that correct?
Yes, yes.
Right? And so this is a way to keeping that cost at a minimum, so more people can participate.
Exactly, and, and that's one, you know, our township fields are there for, you know, to make easily accessible, um, fields for our youth sports organizations. And yes, we do maintain the fields, you know, along with all the other parks. Um, this is one of our organizations that works with us, and, and instead of the township going out and lining the fields, they have their members who are out there and lining the fields before each game.
Again, with all due respect, this, this cutting of the fees is not in the budget. We have to tax our people. You know, we're talking about families that are young, probably two adults working with their kids, maybe, I don't know, I'm just speculating, but I'm sure they have, uh, the, the financial ability to, to pay the fee for their kids to be involved in this.
Potentially could be some single moms and dads, too.
Well, you know, yeah, there could be. There could be anything, you know, there could be, uh, uh, orphans who, the orphan, uh, organization brings them in there and everything, but that's not the point. We are not a socialist government here. We have to run the government, we have to run it for the taxpayers, and, and fifteen hundred dollars here, what about the other clubs? Uh, I don't know, Chad, if you wanna try, chime in on this?
Have we got any requests from other clubs at this point?
Well, well, they will, when they find out it's free. Well, they had this conversation...
Not at this point.
They, they had this conversation with the board last year and the year before, 'cause they just wanted to say, "Don't charge any fees," and then, and then logic and common sense prevailed. Well, if we don't charge fees, then everybody around the area is gonna request to use our fields, and then you have to decide who gets first dibs on that. This is not a good idea. It's very generous, it's a very good democratic view, I guess, but it's not my view. We have a fee schedule, we have to, we have to fix these fields up, and if you look at the activities, they're, they're really, they use a lot of the, I mean, they're busy, and that's great. So I'd like to know how much the parents have to pay, how much money they're taking in on this stuff, and again, it was, uh, a favorite of a former supervisor, and I don't think he got his way either. I don't think he, maybe, maybe they cut the fall fees because it's not a long fall season, but they certainly didn't do it in the spring, and that's what they're asking us to do here. So my answer on this is no.
Of course, I got that. So why don't we do this? Why don't we, why don't we table this until next meeting, and we get some additional information as to how much it's costing the kids to participate, and then see how, and then what the number of, of, um, kids participating would be, because a couple of weeks ago, we were saying we wanted kids out and in the parks and running and exercising.
You know, it's actually not in this letter, but I do recall from our conversations back and forth, because we were going over some details about, about rain delays and using the, the facility. Um, if I recall in the email, there were more than three hundred families are involved in their, their soccer program, and, and the soccer ranges in ages from U-six on up to U-thirteen. So I, from the email before, it's more than three hundred families.
Okay, and, and...
Ages U-sixteen up to U-thirteen.
And, and it looks like on the website, at least for intramural, that it's fifty-five dollars a player.
There you go. And they have how many in there, three hundred?
Three hundred families.
Three, yeah, well, so probably at least one family has one kid at least, maybe two, so three hundred times fifty-five, they're, they're doing pretty well there, you know, so...
But it would be more if they have to pay the fee.
We don't know that.
It won't be that much.
Kids change it.
I, I, I think, so, just throwing this in there, first of all, they do play year-round, so they play, soccer's now spring and fall, so...
Right.
Um, my kids played. Um, I never wanna base a decision based on a past supervisor, I'd like to look at the facts. Um, as far as the fees go, um, I think it'd be prudent for the board, considering there's some desire to table it, um, that they advise us of what their fees go to, so that we can understand, 'cause I'm sure they have expenses as well. I don't think they're taking that fifty-five dollars and they're putting it someplace, and it's not going for something.
Right.
So, um, maybe that additional information will be helpful as well, um, you know, just to kind of have all the facts with us, if that makes sense.
Yep, absolutely. See where the cost savings is for them.
And I'm sure if one of them were here tonight, they would've been able to answer the questions, but you're kind of standing in their place for them, so I get it.
Right, they, uh, it came at last minute. They said all their board members were unavailable because they were coaching.
No, I get it, I'm just saying, you know, more information, like, what are their expenses, what do they look at? I'm sure they have that breakout that they could provide, um, and then, you know, the impact that it would be to the children should the fee have to go up if they cannot get a waiver for that, so, if that sounds fair.
Well, our taxpayers are gonna be looking for a tax increase next year bigger than they can imagine.
Yeah.
Somebody pays for free.
I'll make a motion to table this until we get a little more information and maybe bring it up at the next meeting later this month. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye, I was an aye.
Okay, next is, um, discussion and possible action to change the date of the April twenty-fifth board meeting, and this is being for, precipitated because of a PISA conference that at least three of us will be at on the twenty-fifth. So we want to move the date of the meeting to the twenty-eighth, I believe, if you're correct. But it will be advertised just like the twenty-fifth would be. So all we're looking for today is, um, make sure that people are aware that we need to change that date for the twenty-fifth.
So I move to change our standard Board of Supervisor meeting of April twenty-five to April twenty-eighth, seven P.M., same time.
Okay, it's been moved in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Discussion and authorization to advertise workshop meetings.
What's that? Right, so that's the, uh, the thirteenth and the twenty-first.
So we are going to have, uh, public workshops on the, or actually Board of Supervisor workshops on the thirteenth and the...
The twentieth.
Twentieth.
I was, I was hoping to ask for the twenty-first, it was a possibility, just for, while we're having the discussion.
Okay.
I subsequently learned there's another meeting, I think around five-thirty, but I think if we could, the twenty-first would be my first choice for the second.
There's also some...
On my calendar, I think we did say twenty-first.
But I think there's also some, uh, schedule conflicts with the thirteenth, is that correct?
Who, who, who's in here on the thirteenth?
Zoning Hearing Board meeting is in here on the thirteenth. There's also not enough time between now and Wednesday to advertise and give proper notice.
Okay.
We wouldn't get it in the paper till Wednesday.
Right, so we will keep the twenty-first and look for an additional date for the thirteenth.
The twenty-first is fine with me, if that's the question.
We, we said the thirteenth two weeks ago, why didn't we...
There's a zoning Hearing Board meeting that night.
Yeah, but...
And there's also not a tough time to advertise.
Let's, let's straighten this out. The Board of Supervisors has first dibs on this room.
The zoning Hearing Board meeting has already been advertised, there's not enough time to unadvertise that meeting.
Yeah.
We picked it without knowing what was utilized, this room was already being utilized for.
All right, but we have a schedule now of when the room is utilized, so going forward, we would be able to stay away from any conflicts, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Since it is a workshop, although it's only two days away, is using the alternate site a possibility in keeping the date, or no, we won't get it in the paper in time?
Still won't be able to advertise in time, is the problem.
Yeah.
Right.
Understood.
So is there another date that is desirable?
The administration was thinking if we do the twenty-twenty-one fiscal year review on the twenty-first, then we can come up with another date after that for the, the first quarter review.
Okay. So we're gonna keep the twenty-first and...
So we have the twenty-first and the twenty-eighth right now.
The twenty-eighth is the regular board meeting.
Twenty-eighth is the regular board meeting.
That's the real board meeting, correct?
Right. What do we have the following week after the twenty-eighth?
You're into...
May.
May, the first week of May.
I don't know. You know, you, you know what, meetings are available, if the room is available for the first week of May?
It should be available that Monday, 'cause this Planning Commission is on Wednes-, on the third Monday, so if you wanted to do one on the Monday evening of...
So we would do Monday, the...
May second?
May second?
That should be fine. Do you have Tina's list that she emailed?
I don't know if I have it in front of me.
Okay, I, I did not have it, so, but I believe it's...
I'm looking it up.
Okay, so the twenty-first is going to be for...
Twenty twenty-one.
Twenty twenty-one.
Twenty twenty-one.
And then...
I think that we have to do the first quarter first. That's more important than twenty twenty-one. Twenty twenty-one is history. Tw- uh, first quarter, the, the very first review of this information during the first quarter helps us catch any problems that we might have, and then we can talk about what we have to do about them. Twenty twenty-one is something that can wait more than twenty twenty-two. Is that, uh, does anybody else disagree with what I'm saying?
Well, twenty twenty-one is basically done, it's just a, it's a formality.
Yeah, it's a formality, so we can understand when we go and do our budget, uh, stuff that we have, we know what happens, okay? So I'm saying twenty twenty-one, uh, our, our, April twenty-first should be for Q-one review, okay? And I've prescribed a format I want, which I'll talk about later, okay? So then make, make second, May second twenty, uh, twenty-one review, okay?
Or?
The second or the twenty-first?
Twenty-first for the...
I don't have my work calendar for the second, but it's probably fine.
Okay.
But I'm good on the twenty-first.
The discussion is, we do... The discussion is we do.
I agree with flipping the order.
First quarter first, and then the review of 21 second.
21's over. We can do it whenever we want to do it.
Right.
Okay. So the 21st will be a review of the first quarter of the '22 budget, right?
Yes.
And then the second will be a review of the 2021 wrap-up final.
And just so we're, I looked, I have Tina's email up. The, the second doesn't have anything on it, May 2nd, so it should be fine.
Okay. And then the 28th is the regular scheduled board meeting in place of the 25th. Okay? All right?
So we need a motion to advertise this.
So I need, yeah, I need a motion to advertise all of those dates so that the administration can then make sure that that happens in the paper.
So I move to move the standing board supervisor meeting of 4/25 to 4/28 to add a budget meeting on April 21st at 7:00 PM.
For the first quarter?
For the first quarter review. And to complete on May 2nd, the 2021 wrap-up review of the budget.
Right, I'll second that. All in favor, say aye.
7:00 PM, by the way.
Opposed?
Aye.
I will. All right.
And just making sure, the 21st and the second are workshops?
Yes, they are workshops.
Not public meetings, it's just for the board.
Workshops.
Well, the board is invited.
Right.
He knew what I meant.
As workshops. The public is invited, yep.
Right.
Yeah.
Correct.
Discussion, number three, is discussion and possible action regarding investment of wastewater proceeds fund. Mr. Bell and Mr. Hughes.
I can take the lead on the, on the motion.
We need to table it again, right? I mean, we didn't meet, we didn't talk about it, so we don't have a consensus on what we're going to do.
If I make the motion, we can talk about it here. And if the, if there's a motion to table it, we can do that. Is that good? So, so in light of rising CD rates, I would say make, I'll make the motion that we invest in a six and nine-month CD ladder with the current firm about 13, I'll, I'll say $13 million each leg. So a six-month leg of $13 million and a nine-month leg of $13 million in a CD ladder with our current custodian FNB. And that's to get a little more interest than the current money market arrangement is providing.
Why don't we go 15-15? We have 30 million. It's just going to sit there, do nothing, because we have the other 10. And then we have taxes coming in. We could do 15-15.
Are you going to amend your motion?
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I feel that keeping 10 million, 10 to 12 million aside is about what we're targeting, so.
We'll never, we'll never.
Especially with a six-month ladder, that's coming due anyway. So I'd be comfortable with a 15-15. So I would, I could amend the motion to do a 6-9 CD ladder for, for 15 million a leg as well, with the current custodian FNB bank.
I'll second that motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 So officially, I'm abstaining from the vote.
I got you. You're abstaining. All right, discussion and motion to approve final settlement of insurance claim associated with the repair cost at the water, wastewater treatment plant. This is the excess carrier of the township. Insurance company has issued a settlement offer in the net amount of $921,898.77 for first-party property damage, for damaged equipment at Exeter Township Wastewater Treatment Plant, Influent Pump Station, and for extra expense claims for costs associated with temporary bypassing pumping. No amounts were approved for business interruption claim, which was filed relate, which was filed related to the Influent Pump Station equipment failure. But we have an opportunity, if we so choose as a board, to accept the settlement offer of $921,898.77. Questions?
I'm just curious what Chad's weigh-in is on it.
I mean, in terms of the, the breakdown of it, I think it did make sense. It would have been nice to get the business interruption on top of it as well, but it does seem to be a pretty good offer. I'm not sure if it's a budgeted amount or not. So that would be an additional revenue that we weren't expecting from a claim that happened back in 2018.
So I think they thought they were going to get it last year, is my understanding. And then it, what, didn't come through till this year, perhaps?
Correct, there was a million dollars budgeted last year.
Yeah, so what fund would that go into?
It would go back into the general fund.
Okay.
Because anything related to the sewer plant is now general fund.
Let's put it in general fund.
The expenses were paid out of the sewer fund, which is now part of the general fund.
Gotcha.
I don't, I think the board should consider using it differently. I think that $175,000 could go into general fund to relieve us of the reserves that we use. The rest of it, and I guarantee you, all right, so, so on the 18th, you know, these two guys are coming up to walk through the Redding Country Club. Everybody know about that?
Yes.
Okay, so I guarantee you that to fix up the clubhouse the way that we want it and to work and operating capital, it's going to cost us $2 million or more, easily. So we're going to talk about the $300,000 later today. This additional amount will, and we can put all of it in the Redding Country Club. But we need, I think it needs to have this money there sitting for us waiting to go because our goal, I think, is to have the country club open up for next year for the 100-year anniversary.
I'd like to have it before then.
Yeah, so would I, but, but I don't want to get too optimistic. But where else is the money going to come? Okay, it's not going to come from, from anywhere else unless we take it out of the reserve. And this doesn't need to go into the general fund right now.
So but where would we park it until then if we?
The capital, some capital improvement fund that's earmarked for the Redding Country Club.
Is that possible?
We have a capital improvement fund. There's not a capital improvement fund earmarked for the country club. You could put it into the food and beverage clubhouse fund, which is an operating fund.
We could do that. Let's do that.
So we would take, if I'm hearing correctly, we would take $175,000 of that 900 and relieve the pressure on the reserve fund for the budget.
Right.
So we wouldn't be reaching into the reserve fund to balance the budget. And then the balance of that 900 and?
800 and whatever.
921-898, then would go into this reserve fund for the country club.
Right, the food and beverage fund.
Food and beverage.
I like the idea. Are we able to do that, that leg of this motion? Or do we have to put that on the agenda for next meeting? Do you have an opinion on that, Chad?
I think either way, it's, it's a motion to approve the settlement. So in terms of where the, the finances actually go, I think that's a little bit de minimis in my mind.
Perfect.
Well, that sometimes doesn't happen the way we want to see it. So I think we need to make it a part of the record where we want this money to go so it actually gets to where we want it to go.
Well, we're basically, we've talked it to pretty much, we've grounded it. So it's, it's on record, both in tape and also in the minutes, that we will move, we will take the 175, and then the balance would go into the food and beverage.
Just so you know, though, I, I'm keeping track of the things that we talk about and the things that we want done from the minutes, from meeting to meeting. And some of the things that we say we're going to do or that we want, they do not get done. And that's why I want to make sure that the money gets where we want the money to go. That's, that's my concern.
It'll be part of the minutes.
And I think the board's given pretty clear direction.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is the minutes don't reflect what actually happens, okay? They don't listen to what we want to have done.
Well, this is, this is a new day and a new, new salary.
Okay, well, you can believe, you can believe that, but I'm not going to be naive and think that things are going to change overnight, so. Anyway.
Are you in favor with that direction now?
I'm in favor if there's a motion on the table to accept the settlement.
Okay, there is, is there a motion to accept the settlement?
I'll make a motion to accept the final settlement of the insurance claim associated with repair costs at the wastewater treatment plant in the amount of $921,898.77, putting $175 into the, $175,000 into the general fund and the balance into the Redding Country Club food and beverage fund. Got it? Is that all of it, I think?
I second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Discussion and possible action as it pertains to a forensic audit. So this has been asked to be put on the agenda, so it is on the agenda, so I think we should discuss it at this point. Mr. Hughes?
Well, I remember at the beginning of the year when we, I remember at the beginning of the year when we all met, when we were still friends, we all agreed that we needed a forensic audit. No one disputed that. And here we finally get it on the agenda a little, little bit more than three months later. And why do we need a forensic audit? Well, first of all, we had a whole set of books and records that disappeared from the Redding Country Club. Now, that was noted in a forensic audit that was conducted related to the bonds, not related to the books. The books were just mentioned as a, a, a product of their investigation. So if anybody in the organization can show me where an investigation happened and where they concluded what happened to those books, I'd be happy to see that. But there was none. And some former supervisors claimed that they gave information to the DA's office. I contacted the DA's office before I was a supervisor, and they told me they never received anything. So I'm getting information that doesn't sound, you know, quite right to me. And when I hear those kind of things, it makes me concerned. We also finished the D C E D report, my, one of my favorite reports. And it concluded that there were two accounting errors that have to be fixed. One of them, which is one I've been talking about for a couple of years now, is a $1.8 million overstatement of our monies on the balance sheet. We're going to write those off, poof, like that. $1.8 million disappears into the air. So, and then the difficulty we have with, two weeks ago, I was told that it's really difficult to give me access to the ERP system. Well, it's two weeks later, and, you know, I still haven't gotten access to the ERP system. Very few people have. I asked for financial information, reports that I, I can't get because in some cases, I'm told it's impossible. So when we have these kind of problems and other problems that my colleagues are aware of, I think we need, desperately need, a forensic audit. And a forensic audit is something that we'll have to define. It can, it can be looking at, we can, we can focus it to different areas that we want it to focus on. But a conclusion we arrived at at the beginning of the year was that we would all feel a lot more comfortable if we knew what we were sitting on. So I, I hope that we will agree tonight to move forward and conduct a forensic audit. Thank you.
I think that, I think that we should set the parameters of what the audit will cover before we agree to do it. And I think that we should also figure out where this is in the budget. Because it is not in the budget.
Well, that's, that's where some of this extra money from COVID-19 could be used, I think. Because I think they changed the rules. We can pretty much use whatever it would be used for if it was in the general fund, so.
But, but again, don't, don't you think that we should plan it out? And then be able to come back and say in front of the people here, as well as to ourselves, we're going to do a forensic audit, it's going to go down this street, and we estimate the cost to be X. Because at the end of the day, based on everything that I've researched, a forensic audit could be very expensive. You're talking somewhere between $300 and $500 per hour. And the initial review from everything that I've studied takes about 40 hours. So if it's at the $400 level, that's $16,000, then we haven't done anything yet. So I just want to make sure that we, when we say we're going to do this, we are understanding exactly what the cost is.
That, that cost is well worth it, let me tell you. So we could give everybody free, free, free use of the, everything else, but we can't make sure that our financial house is in order.
I didn't say that.
Now, well, I know, but I do know from statements you made in the past, you don't like to go back. You don't like to look what's going on in the back. This is something that we should do. We should probably do it from 2019 through 2021, maybe even later on in 2022. But this is the time where all the funny stuff was going on.
What I'm telling you is I agree with what you're saying. I just think that we need to have a plan and understand exactly if it's going to be, is it going to be 2019 to 2022? Because of that, every year adds more money to the cost.
That's right, it does. But it's well worth it because of what's going on here. I mean, we, we can't get financial information. We have an ERP system that we've had five or six years that was never expanded out. None of you have access to it. Why?
I do.
You do?
Uh huh.
I've been asking for access for two months. Why do you have it and I don't?
You, I don't know why I have it and you don't, but I got a password. I got in, I'm in, I'm in the system.
Have you ever asked via email, have you ever asked for it?
I did ask for it specifically, but, I did, so I don't, maybe that's why I got it.
I think, I think people are well aware in this organization that we, I have asked for it, we have all asked for it. Mr. Volmer has asked that we all have access to it. That is total poppycock, all right?
No, he asked for his own access.
Okay, so you will get access.
So on this question here.
On this issue.
On this, that's an important issue too. On the motion or the discussion, I have no objection to looking at things. I would echo, and I'm just going to echo it towards Dave since you brought the topic. I would prefer to be formatted in a way where it had a little structure. So in other words, if it said a little more specificity around it. So what I'm proposing is, we had some discussion today. I would just like a little more specificity on what we're looking at. And I could be very likely on board at that point. I don't want to prove something personally that's just completely open-ended. So all I'm saying is, can we put a little more specificity around it? And then bring a little more specifics so that people know what we're doing and at what cost? Then I'm likely supportive. But that would be my request in two cents to this discussion. Because they are incredibly expensive, and you can warrant that, justify it. But I would just like a little more specificity to be completely on board with the spending of the people's money. So.
I'm on board with, I, myself, I have no problem looking at things. But again, I would like to know, narrow down the cost, narrow down what we're looking for so that we know what kind of costs we're going to incur. You know, I, I would like to know that the money that we're going to spend is, you know, going in a direction where we have suspicion of something. I don't like an open-ended thing. So I'm not against a forensic audit by any means, but I would myself as well, like some specifics. So we have a cost in mind. Because I don't want to randomly just spend money just to spend money, especially when it isn't budgeted. Yes, we do have the ARP funds, but, you know, those are funds we don't want to spend foolishly either. So, because we do have other things we need to pay for in the township.
Well.
Forensic audit litigation and analysis, expert witnesses, 200 bucks an hour. That's what it's going to cost about.
Well, there, there are many, many examples out there. There's 200 buck an hour forensic audits. There are 300 to 500 dollar an hour forensic audits.
I, I remove, I remove my, my request for a forensic audit, guys. You just go ahead and it's just like the Titanic, let's just keep going forward, okay?
Well, I'm not removing my request for a forensic audit. What I'm saying is, I want specifics around. So when we point the forensic auditors on a trail, they are going on something and they're not going on a witch hunt.
Now, you all had an idea of a forensic audit at the beginning of the year. What, what was your idea of a forensic audit? What, what were you thinking of when you said, yeah, 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 we need a forensic audit?
My idea was to be able to narrow it down, to say this is the specific area that we want to look at. So yes, I could agree to a forensic audit.
And what was that area that you were thinking of?
Well, the big concern was the country club, right?
No, that's not where our money is. Our money is in First National Bank, over $40 million. You go where the big money is. You go where the big money is, we, we, the, the Reading Country Club...
Isn't that what we just paid Herbine to do, is to look at all of those accounts? Does, does that mean no or yes, or you're just, you're done talking about it?
It means I've done talking about it, because it's just a conversation that, a conversation that's not gonna go anywhere with me.
We're telling you, we're telling you that we want to support a forensic audit, and you're telling us our conversation doesn't make any sense.
The forensic, the Reading Country Club brings in less than a million dollars a year and spends about a million dollars a year. We have all kinds of things going on. We have loans that are being taken out in funds and transferred all around, out of our bank, you know, signature cards that we don't reorganize on in the first day of the year. I would, I would put my emphasis where the big money is.
Okay, then, that's all I'm saying, but we still need to say where we're going.
No, but you said the Reading Country Club.
But that was one of the things we talked about originally. I mean, you know, we, while you got a lot of stuff going on in your head, we cannot read your mind.
I'm always available, I've always been open and available for any questions, so people in this room could tell you, I could talk for hours, on any subject you wanted to discuss.
We've all experienced it.
So I could, I could pull, I could, I could pull Jennifer Savage's thing, well, you never sent me an email to talk about it, but I would say, you didn't have to send me, just call me up or talk to me, right?
Okay.
If, if you have a concern. I've been talking about this since we first, since I first got on the board. It's no mystery. And I could tell you, no one asked me, well, what kind of forensic audit are you looking, thinking of? What areas do you wanna go into? Did you, you know?
This is, this is actually the, the system working. We're actually discussing it as a, or, this is, I mean, this is what I would expect of this agenda item. I don't, I mean, we've...
So I wanna do it where the big money is. That makes sense. And the big money is, is not at the Reading Country Club, it's right here in the heart of...
Happy town.
Rock and roll here, you know? So that's where the forensic audit would be focused, to make sure we're following procedures. I mean, we had a procedure where you can't transfer any money, money the first three months of the year, and I could tell you that two of those years that I want us to have the forensic audit on, transfers were made during the first three months.
All right. All we said, all George said, is that he wanted specificity around what it was we were going to go after, so...
There you have it.
Okay? We could put together a plan.
And for me, the other part would just be an idea of the cost, so, and Chad, is that something that, do you have any expertise where you could estimate that for us? It doesn't have to be on the fly, by the way, I'm, I'm just asking the question.
No, you're not putting me on the spot, but, you know, I, I, I mean, honestly, my thought would be if Supervisor Hughes has an idea of the cost, that would be helpful to share a couple of different options with the board perhaps.
So, so I could tell you this, and I've asked this when I wasn't a supervisor, I've asked it now that I am a supervisor, part of the cost of doing any audit depends on your internal controls. And I think you guys know what kind of internal controls we have here. So it could be very expensive. Is it going to be so expensive that it would blind you? No, I think we're gonna have to spend some money to get this done once and for all. And some, some of the stuff I'm sure could piggyback on, on the current Herbine audit, okay? So that might make it a little bit less expensive. But I think we have to break the bullet and understand we have to do this. We have to do it for the taxpayers, we have to do it for ourselves.
Well, and, and my only thought, and it may be of the benefit of the board here, is if there are specific companies that have specific proposals, that would be helpful, I'm sure, for the board to consider and weigh and evaluate. I don't know if you wanna lead the charge there, David, or...
I, I could certainly start looking into it and talking to the CPA firms that have experienced in forensic investigations.
That's, honestly, that's all I personally was looking for.
And if I may also suggest, I would like to see a forensic, a forensic audit done on our past legal help for the amount of fees that we spent.
So now you're talking two forensic audits?
Yeah, and I'm just bringing it up now while we're talking about it.
I think that, I think it would make sense, I mean, just from a financial standpoint, to do what David is talking about at this point, and then maybe look for in '23, put money in the budget to be able to...
Yeah. And I, and I've already sent you an email, Chad, of the Devil's Advocate. Those are the guys, those are the best, those are the guys we really want. It should put shivers down our former solicitor's backs when they hear that name.
So I, I have some questions for you on that, because I did look at their website. I'm not seeing on there, so I'm hoping you can point me to it where they work on a contingency basis.
No, I did talk, I did talk to them, they, they do not work on a contingency basis.
So we would have to pay them.
Yes.
It isn't free.
Yeah, they're gonna wanna, they're gonna wanna get paid, that's correct.
Right, but when you...
Somehow I got the bad, I was, you know, given bad information.
Okay, so we would have to pay them. The other thing that I saw on there is that there's no, nothing that holds what they find, that, that, the, the other law firm that they investigate, that they're not held by the findings of Devil's Advocate. So we would have to spend money to make them...
We'd have to litigate. Those lawyers want money, let me tell you.
That's what I'm saying, though, so you, you know, you have to consider that too, if you're, if you wanna do an audit, what are you gonna get back by the money that you spend?
I could just tell you from, from my experience, you know, there's people at the former supervisors who have been complaining numerous times about how much money I cost the township because of my appeals, okay? I don't know, somebody came, what, a hundred eighty thousand, I don't know, some crazy number like that. Well, first of all, I didn't spend the money, those guys decided they were gonna spend the money and fight my appeals. But I could tell you that in some of those appeals, one of the law firms that we had had four or five attorneys against me. They had their law clerks, they had their attorneys, and they were, so they were overcharging us, really. They'd send them, they'd send an email to one of their other attorneys saying, well, you know, look at this document, tell me what you think about it, right, Chad? That's what they do. So they were churning everything.
Understood. But, no, can I just, I've, the only thing I would say to that is my first course of action with something like that is to be, review the contract from Fox Child, who is your, I guess who you're referring to, to see what they were allowed to charge, because I know when we looked at solicitor's agreements, it's specifically spelled out there how many attorneys could look. So if they did use more than they shouldn't have used, I think the first course of action, if we do wanna look at them, this is just my two cents, is to look at the contract.
And I just wanna add to your two cents, is the fact that the Devil's Advocate will work on a percentage weight. So as much as they can see that's wrong, that gets turned back to the client, then they would charge a small percentage of that.
Yeah.
It's not like the regular ones.
That wasn't on the website either.
No, they, they, their website says they do not work on a contingency.
Yeah, but, but wait a minute, I, I talked to one of the principals in, in the firm, and what they told me was, what they'll do is they'll first take a sampling of our invoices. So we're not gonna, we're not gonna walk into having to pay a lot of money unless we, we give them a sampling of, of what we're looking at, and then they'll come back and say, yeah, this looks like it has some potential, and then we could decide then.
Right, but what we said, what we said earlier is that we're going to work on, the first part of this is the big money.
Well, we could, we could do both.
Right.
Especially the first part where we just, where they just wanna sample it, and then we can find out, you know, the sample, I don't think they're gonna charge us anything. I, I don't know, I didn't, I didn't look at all the files he sent me, but we can, let's, let's revisit those and see what, what the requirements are.
Let's get the plan together, understand what the first part is gonna cost us, and then start to look at what Michelle wants to do. But I think to, you know, trying to do too many things at one time is not a good practice for anybody. So I, I do think that all of these things need to happen, but they need to happen in a controlled fashion.
Okay, I'm fine, I just would like to see that done also.
So Dave is gonna take the lead on finding multiple, a couple of groups that have forensic audit capability, and he's gonna talk to them and then come back to us and say, here are the groups that I'll talk to, here's who I recommend that we do it.
That's right.
Work with.
I agree.
And I'll, and I'll reach out to the Devil's Advocate just to connect with them to see if I get more information from them.
All right.
Their website has a lot. I don't know if you did check it out or not?
I did, yeah.
Okay.
Next on the agenda is discussion and possible action regarding hiring special counsel.
So this, this came from me. Just in terms of the scope of legal services, there's an additional legal issue that's developed. I've, I've researched a number of law firms that are well-respected and I've worked with in the past in some capacity. I'm recommending engaging the firm of McConnell, or McMaine Connell and Linehauser out of Westchester, Pennsylvania. My thought would be, appropriate motion would be to authorize Clarence to sign an agreement contingent upon the solicitor's review and approval to engage the firm as a special counsel.
That's a motion. Need to make that motion?
Please.
Right? What he said.
Do you make them, I'll make the motion.
Okay. You gonna make, you got a second or...
Special counsel for what? Does that explain what it's about?
It's for legal services.
For what?
For additional legal services.
Can't...
For what?
For additional legal services.
What do they investigate?
I didn't say they were investigating, I said some additional legal work. We'd be outsourcing for them to do, perform these services. I believe they, once we get a copy of the agreement, happy to share it with you.
Do we need a second?
Yep.
We're waiting on a second, I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Next on the agenda is discussion and motion to authorize purchase of a seven-point-five-ton rooftop HVAC unit. Clarence, you have information?
Yeah. Yes, at the last meeting, you guys asked me to go back and get some more information. I called all of them. Burkhart Mechanical, they didn't really have much more to add than what they already said. Warko said they're standing with what they've got, they don't have any more thing, anything more to say. I did find another company that asked, because that we advertised, they asked to bid on it, so they did. They came in at fifteen thousand, three hundred and twenty-five. I talked to Chad, since this was made public, we went back to everybody and said, you guys wanna re-quote? And Landis went down to fifteen-two-five-one-point-three-three.
Yeah, good job with that, Clarence, I'm, I'm glad you went back and did that. Blansky looks like the one. I mean, they, if, if you've opened up their quote, they got everything you could ever want if you were really crazy about HVAC systems. I mean, they got the drawings, they got the specifications, they got the diagrams, they've got the photograph of the unit. It's a carrier, just like the other quotes are. So they're one or two hundred, two hundred dollars more than, than Landis is, but we had to go back and get Landis to drop their price. So I like these guys, you know, we don't have to take the lowest price, we don't have to take the highest price, but I think we could take the best, looks like an honest vendor to me, Blansky.
It said, it seemed to me that it said, it's a little hard to compare and contrast, honestly, but it also seemed that on the Landis proposal, they were excluding a few items that, one of them was patch that was not excluded in the Blansky, which makes me think they're really the same cost. I mean, a patch gotta be seventy-five bucks, I would think. Nobody's gonna hop on the ladder for less than seventy-five bucks, so. My hunch is they're essentially the same quote, and I also felt that Blansky gave a good faith effort right out of the chute with a lot of detail. And Warko, bless their heart, your proposal wasn't competitive to begin with, and your information was light, so I can't make an informed decision with the information they provided. So I would lean Blansky myself. But if you had experience, I would hear it with Blansky if you...
I have not.
So, okay.
I know nothing about them.
Do you have experience with Landis?
Well, they're, they're the ones that take care of all our stuff, so, they, they've been doing it all.
I don't know this one.
Diane, any?
I know nothing about HVAC systems, so I'm, you know, they, I liked the new information from Blansky, I thought it was very informative, way over my head, not my wheelhouse, so I, you know, the price difference isn't huge.
The only thing that wasn't good about Blansky is they wanted to come in after everything was advertised, or where everybody else put theirs in up front.
Yeah, I got it. I, I know what you're saying. You feel like they're kinda undercut the others?
Yeah, I mean, Landis told me what he did. He went back, they found a, a company that would get a crane for less than five-hundred dollars less, and he got Carrier to drop two hundred bucks. Yeah, that's how he got to where he's got to, you know, but...
I personally felt they gave a good faith effort. I just sort of liked the Blantis in reviewing this particular...
Whatever you guys want, I mean, either one, they're both...
By us, excuse me, Blansky, yeah.
They're gonna do the job, I mean...
Yeah, of course. They gave energy efficiency ratings, I think it's darn near the same unit, really, but the energy efficiency rating was good in Blansky as well, so.
And they're both, you're both looking at twenty weeks, so it doesn't really matter.
Exactly.
Is that the lead time?
Yeah.
Twenty weeks?
Yeah, everybody, all of them.
Okay.
I personally make the motion to approve Blansky myself.
Except you are, they, they can get him sooner.
You made that motion?
Sure.
I'll second it.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I've got nothing.
All right. A discussion and possible action of three hundred thousand insurance, three hundred thousand K insurance claim related to the misappropriation of Reading Country Club bond proceeds that were used, supposed to be used for capital improvements at the Reading Country Club, but instead were used to pay off the same bond principal and interest and for the Reading Country Club operating expenses. Total misappropriated funds were identified as two-point-seven million dollars. Want to talk about that?
Yeah, so, you know, we, we took this two-point-seven million, and I apologize, I didn't, I don't mean to say it was misappropriated, it was misapplied, okay? So my, my bad on that. But it was two-point-seven million, and I don't know if I need to go in, into any detail of what it entailed, some of it you described, but this two-point-seven million dollars obviously never made it to the country club to make capital improvements. So we're trying to rectify some of that by taking some of the nine-hundred thousand from the sewer plant, which no longer exists, so, so that helps. This three hundred thousand, which is related to the Keystone Cop activity that occurred on this, would go a long way in adding additional monies that we will need to bring that club up to where we want it to be. So I, I recommend that we take the three hundred thousand out of debt service and put it right in there with the Food and Beverage Fund.
Well, Jen, I don't know if you wanna potentially explain where this money is, whether it can be reallocated?
I would need a board motion, because it's not budgeted.
Okay.
Yeah.
But, but where, where are the funds currently?
It was received last year in 2021, it was posted into the debt service fund because the, the bond claim was to offset costs associated with the spinning the tax-free bond into a taxable bond. So the fees are going to be repaid through principal and interest in the debt service fund, so that's why that money was put into that fund to help offset those fees, additional debt service fees. If the money, the board would like to transfer the money, I would need a board motion to transfer between funds.
And, and those fees that we incurred were because we used the bond proceeds for taxable operating costs instead of capital improvements. So we were, we, our stupidity caused us to incur more money.
Right, but it is possible, if we make a motion to say move those dollars, you could move those dollars legally.
Yes, with board motion.
With a board motion?
Yes.
Okay. So do I have a motion from the board to move the, the three hundred thousand dollars from debt service to...
Fund ten, the Reading Country Club, Clubhouse Fund.
I'll make the motion to transfer the three hundred thousand dollars from the debt service fund to the Food and Beverage Fund, Fund Number Ten.
For the Reading Country Club.
For the Reading Country Club.
Second?
I can second that.
All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Discussion and possible action to invoice the Reading Country Club, Clubhouse to the Exeter Government, parks and recreation for use of the Reading Country Club for the Festival of Lights. The government has loaned the Reading Country Club funds last year to buy some equipment. Government is, side, is loaning money, providing labor, charging Reading Country Club, then utilizing the facilities without charge. It's a house, a housekeeping and accounting reporting between the two, one government, one enterprise fund for profit. It's simply a reporting financial activity in the correct buckets.[1797.91] So really what you're talking about is just saying that this would move over here and move over there, this for '21 budget though, right?
Well, for last year, yes, because.
Cannot change last year.
Well, we'll have to do it this year, obviously, because.
Point forward, this is the way you would like for it to be done.
Yeah, we, well, we need to actually move the money into the Food and Beverage Fund. So what I'm proposing is we know from, from recent history that they had a wedding reception there. That wedding reception, we charged them a little bit over $10,000. They only used the one banquet room, the large banquet room. The Festival of Lights used all three banquet rooms. They used other facilities. They had reindeer there in front of the pro shop. They had a food vehicle in the back patio. So I, I came up with the number, which I think is fair, because now three banquet halls instead of one, $12,000 is reasonable. So the government would pay the Food and Beverage Fund $12,000 for the use of that. And Sandra told me, we, in fact, Mr. Ham was there when we were doing the tour of the, the, the clubhouse. I asked Sandra, did you invoice the township for the use of the facility for the Festival of Lights? And he said, no. And I said, I have this on video, by the way, so if there's any dispute, I can certainly provide it. He said, no. And I said, well, why not? He said, well, Jennifer Savage told me not to. And that's another problem. I don't think she has the, the authorization to tell the Redding Country Club what to charge and what not to charge, okay? So I'm asking the board to approve this transfer, to pay for services that were rendered. And I don't know, does the Redding Country Club file tax return? It's a for-profit business. When Sue has to file a tax return.
It does not.
It does not.
Wait, where do you want to transfer the money from and to?
That would be the general fund.
From, yeah, I guess it's gonna be from the general fund or from, or from the Parks and Recreation. They used it, see, if, if Morningstar would have been running that, they would not, we would not have been doing it for free. And here's the thing.
I get it. I'm just trying to get some clarity here of where you want the money to come from and where you want, like, so you're saying you think that the Parks budget should take money out and put it into the general fund?
Who, who held?
No, the general fund would pay the clubhouse fund, is what he's saying.
Who held?
Becky would have no budget for the rest of the year to spend on any events.
That's, that's last year, so it's nothing that we can do about it.
I have to move the money this year. It has to be, no, no.
Yeah, we move it this year, though.
It has to be this year's expense. I cannot change the last year.
That's what I'm saying, though. If we did anything, it would be for this year.
Correct. It would be this year's money, this year's expense.
But, but we should do it. It gives us a chance to transfer some more money into the Redding Country Club. It's gonna need a lot more than what we're transferring into it. But we also have a situation where the Equipment Fund has bought equipment on the behalf of the Redding Country Club and they have to pay, there's a loan outstanding that they have to pay back. So we're charging them for everything we do, but then we're using their facility and not paying them anything.
That's false. We don't charge the golf course at all for any of the administrative duties that happen over here. We process all their payroll.
I'm not talking about the administrative duties. I'm talking about the guys that go over there and do work and charge their hours to the Redding Country Club.
I'm just saying, it should go both ways. We don't charge them anything. If they had to go hire a bookkeeper to do what we do, they would be paying an additional 40, 50, 60,000 dollar expense.
I don't know. I've never seen your books.
We do all the bookkeeping over here.
But the fact is, is that the, the issue that we're talking about happened in '21.
That's right. So, so if you, if you provide a service in 2021 and I didn't pay you, you're still gonna make me pay in 2022, right? You want your money for.
As long as I had the understanding upfront that I was, you were gonna pay.
Well, well.
They did not have that understanding.
Would you provide a service? Well, no, I asked him, I said, why didn't you invoice them? And he said, Jennifer Savage told me not to invoice them.
I don't believe Jen said, he didn't say Jen.
Yes, he did.
I don't think.
Well, I'll prove you wrong. I have the video, Mr. Ham.
It doesn't matter.
It doesn't matter. What I'm trying to figure out is how do we, how do we do this and?
We have never.
We transfer $12,000 from the general fund into.
But Parks and Recreation is gonna be hit for something in '22.
Correct. With tax dollars, yes.
Who start, who, who, who is responsible for creating and holding the Festival of Lights?
We are in a township-owned corporate.
Okay, so take it, take it from whoever was responsible for holding it. I thought it was Parks, maybe it's not Parks and Recreation. Maybe it's, maybe it's just Jennifer Savage. Maybe it's her deal. I don't know. Okay, but the point is, you know, they provided a service. We didn't pay them. When we go, when those guys go over there and they work, they're cutting down trees, their, whatever services they're providing the Redding Country Club, they charge their time, on their time card.
That is false. It does not go to the Food and Beverage nor the Country Club books. It stays in the general fund.
Well, perhaps I could just, I mean, just to cut to the chase. So would you be satisfied if there was a motion to transfer $12,000 from the general fund, not from Parks, to the Redding?
That's fine. I don't care where it comes from. It could come out of her back pocket.
It's still an unbudgeted expense.
Right.
That's all right. We're, we're doing a lot of unbudgeted expenses lately, okay? And the bottom line is it still benefits our community. It's still, and it benefits the Redding Country Club.
You're putting it in the country club.
That's been setting fallow for five years now.
So we're gonna, we're gonna make a motion to transfer $12,000 out of the gym?
Just the $12,000. So if somebody holds an event in the country club associated with the golf course currently, they pay a $400 fee to utilize the facility. The $12,000 for the aforementioned event that happened in October was because there was alcohol served, there was other items that happened. It was a food and beverage event. They had workers there that we paid out of there. So if a golf outing comes in, they hold a golf outing, they wanna utilize the second floor of the clubhouse, there is a $400 fee.
Yeah, I, the $12,000 figure to me is random, so I'm not real comfortable with just saying.
No, it's not random.
To me, it's random. I have my opinion. To me, it's random.
The $12,000.
You think it's not, but I'm just telling you, to me, $12,000 for the Festival of Lights seems like a random figure.
The $12,000 was based upon the fee schedule that was in, prior, in use. If you were holding a paid event, utilizing staff, caterers, those sorts of things at the country club. A wedding, a bar mitzvah, a baby shower.
So I'm just saying, I, I'm, I'm not comfortable with $12,000. That's just my opinion. I, you know, we hold the Festival of Lights for the township and people, the residents, they enjoy it, they go there. So I don't wanna basically rob Peter to pay Paul to, to make a point.
Well, not only that, though, the, all of the staff volunteers their time for the Festival of Lights.
Correct.
Right? Is that correct?
Yes, in all the events, yes.
So.
It's not the point, though. That's not the point. The facilities are being utilized by the government. This is an enterprise fund, for-profit, okay? We probably don't pay any, filing taxes because we don't make any money.
But the facility that had no workers working, all they did, all they did is utilize the space.
People were there, people were there walking. I know Sandra was there.
Nobody works from over there.
Oh, so that's okay. So if I, so if I volunteer to have a, a luncheon up at the Stokesay Castle, they're not gonna charge me? If I volunteer? They're gonna charge me for using the facility. There's wear and tear. Hundreds, if not thousands of people were walking through those three banquet halls, okay? You had two reindeer that looked like they were on their last legs out there, okay? Throwing all, all kinds of stuff. You had, you actually had a food service truck. And unfortunately, they were making the money instead of Exeter Township, Redding Country Club, because we've mismanaged it so badly. And let, wait a minute, let's talk about, let's talk about the golf outings, okay? Those things were going on without our knowledge. We were told, this community was told that the Redding Country Club banquet hall was closed to everyone.
But you're mixing apples and oranges. We're talking about the, the $12,000 or whatever the number is for utilization for festivals of light. That's a separate issue from.
She brought it up.
Okay, but, but I'm trying, whether she brought it up or anybody brought it up, I'm trying to bring it back to what's the subject at hand. The subject at hand is what should, that we be paying to Redding Country Club for utilizing the clubhouse for Festival of Lights? And so you said 12,000, Diana said that she believes that's not a, a, a real number. So what we should do is come up with what is the real number for the, for the.
Look, I based, I based that number on the wedding reception we just had held there.
This wasn't a wedding reception.
It wasn't, but they only used one of the, the rooms and they only had like 200 people, okay? We're using all the three rooms, you know, and all, and, and thousands of people walking through the rooms. They had all kinds of stuff going on. It doesn't matter if it was catered or not. You could call the truck out there, the caterer, okay? But adding additional $2,000 for the other two banquet halls is not a big deal.
Historically, when the prior food and beverage vendor was in the Redding Country Club, we were allowed to utilize it free of charge. We gave them the dates in advance. We used it a few times a year for a couple of events. Festival of Lights was the main one. We just had to give them the event so they could book it off their calendar. We were allowed to utilize it free of charge because it is the township's own building.
Show me the proof of that. I'd like to see it.
How can I show you something we did not pay?
Interesting. Off the books, huh?
Well, I, I think.
Paid something out of my own pockets?
I, I, I think at this point, unless there's any other discussion on, on the topic, maybe a motion would be wise.
To what?
To, to whatever the will of the board happens to be or any individual supervisor.
Well, let Diana make the motion so she has another number in her mind.
I don't have a motion to make, so.
So at this point, I would tell you that we need to come up with what everyone believes is a, a real number and then we could make a motion to, to do that. So what I would say is that we need to, we need to have more information to be able to say this is what the cost would be if we did a Festival of Lights and then we would then transfer that amount.
That's the only thing in the fee schedule is $400 to utilize the clubhouse when you're having a golf outing.
But it's not, so again, can we then, can we table this and get that information and then go, come back?
Well, if there's no motion, then, right, there's nothing.
Right. Okay?
I mean, we moved 800,000 in a minute. This is half hour of my life, so I'm for tabling it. Nah, I don't know what else to say.
Can I, can I add one thing to that? Well, I've been helping with the Festival of Lights for 12 years. And when the restaurant was open, we actually, when we had the event, people did go downstairs and use the restaurant. Only recently, since it's been closed, we've brought in the food trucks to supply the restaurant.
I got it.
Okay.
It's a community event.
Right. I got you.
So when the restaurant was open, it did help out the restaurant with Chef Allen.
Right. Well, Chef Allen was first and then?
Right, then it was Eva.
Eva.
So some people would actually go down and eat dinner while they were waiting for their number to be called or something.
Right. So we'll come up with a number and then come back at the next meeting. Discussion and possible action to update, on the update on the complete set of financial records missing from Redding Country Club.
Oh, we're, we're going back in time again. We're looking into the past. I, I know I did. I'm just shocked, that's all. So. Might wanna get your opinion on this. We have a whole set.
You have to be so rude.
A whole set. Page three of the forensic audit, a whole set of financial records are gone missing. No one can explain it. And I could tell you, in my experience, I've only had three times where I experienced where books and records were missing. And each time, there was funny stuff going on with the money. So we spent, just the Casper alone, we gave them over $600,000 of that 2.7 million. We, we can't, we can't see where it went, you know? I mean, they could do some auditing around it, which they did, but still, the whole set of books and records are gone. They disappeared, we found out they disappeared in 2000, I think 2018, when they did the audit. And during that year was when one of our former supervisors was hired as the township Redding Country Club manager. Get paid $2,000. Never mentioned that the books were missing. So my question is, when did, first of all, when did these books actually go missing? Where, who had control of them, you know, and who, who should have been held responsible for? There's been no investigation. I mean, we got five detectives here. I don't think any of our detectives detected what happened to the books. And I don't know, maybe they're not white collar, financial type of detectives. I don't know. But we were also told that this data, this information was provided to the DA's office. The DA claims, and you could check with them again, Chad, if you want, that they have no information given to them by Exeter Township. And it's the former supervisors who claimed that, that it has done. Now, when, when this thing came up and I first started talking about it, it was in, oh, 2019, I think. And Lisa Vander Leyne promptly resigned from the board in April. And you could see the minutes where she suggests the board provide this information to the DA's office. And I don't believe the board ever followed up on that. And there's been no investigation since.
But the records are missing still.
The whole, a full set of all the funds that are related, the golf course fund, the Food and Beverage Fund, and I think there was a third fund that was involved in it too, they're all gone, all gone. And no one seems to care, except me.
People don't care, but I mean, but if they're gone, how do, we can't reconstruct them, right?
That's not the point, Cal, Carl. We have to, we have to investigate who, who was, who, who should have been the keeper of those books, right? Somehow they disappeared. You understand? Financial data that we would, we could look at, at any time and understand what happened to that 2.7 million dollars disappeared, completely disappeared. This is so unusual. It's a very rare thing that happens, especially with a organization that's owned by the taxpayers of Exeter Township. We owe it to them to find out what happened. Who had control of them? Who was responsible, responsible for them? And I think we need to look into this and find out what happened. There's.
Well, where do we start? If we don't have any books, where do we start?
We start by interviewing the people that worked there at the time, interviewing Spees when he was the manager of the, of the Redding Country Club. He never says in any of his reports, the few that he does give to the board, anything about the books. And you know, if you're the manager, you're gonna get the books, you're gonna put together at least a quarterly results of what's going on. We don't see any of that, that activity going on. So I, I, I can't really say what's, what happened because I would be guessing. But that's part of it. Where were the books originally kept? Who kept them?
Do you want some detail on the timeline and what is actually, can be found?
Yeah.
So the forensic audit that was done was looking at, hold on, I'm looking for my email here. Was looking at records from the years 2005, when we purchased the country club, through 2016, because this was looking at a bond issuance problem. So 2005 to 2016. The referenced former supervisor, Mr. Spees, worked for the township in 2017. We weren't even looking for records for the period of time during which he worked here. The records that could not be found are prior to 2000, the financial records that could not be found were prior to 2008. Because I have the financial system back to 2008. So this is in a former financial system, which all the records were kept, paper version, in the basement. Prior to myself starting here, most everything here was paper. There was not a whole lot of electronics. So we could not find fund financials from the period, from 2005 to 2008. It was some years in there. Some of the other things that were missing, there were some Home Depot receipts that were missing from, I'm gonna say between 2005 and 2010. They, they were looking at expenditures that were made. We only have to keep for, after seven years, the audited financials of the township. So these records were prior to seven years ago. The only reason we have any of the records is because prior to, a couple of years ago, we were not really diligent on record retention and record destruction. So there was a lot of things in the basement prior to about three, four years ago that did not, did not need to be here anymore and was basically just taking up space. So we hadn't destroyed all that, so luckily we were able to find some of it, but we were not able to find all of it from that. Like I said, we were looking at 2005 to 2016. And we were doing this in 2019.
The matter is, in 2018 is when they discovered the books were missing, okay? So we don't know what, what was, when the books disappeared. We don't know that. We just know in 2018, when the forensic audit was done on the. We just know in 2018, when the forensic audit was done on the bonds, they were not there, okay? And you would think that as long as you have bonds outstanding, that you would keep those records, okay? You wouldn't throw them away.
They're not bond records, they're fund financials.
It's out of order. I'm talking. One person talks, right?
Yes, sir. You have the floor.
All right. So there's a controversy, even the auditors say, hey, we did this audit, we couldn't find the books. Well, we have the books for everything else they audited, right? Except the books for the Redding Country Club. So why wouldn't we have those? I think we need to look into it. There was an investigation, they asked some people some questions, but they stopped. It was about the bonds, it wasn't about the books.
Well, I think the thing that we would need to do is you need to figure out, who do we ask these questions of, right? Because if this goes all the way back to 2005 to 2008, if I remember correctly, at that particular time, the pro at the country club was Tom Morgan and...
Was it? I don't...
I think so. And I think...
And these were outsourced companies at the time. So Tom was an employee, I believe, of those, yes.
What I'm saying though is, for all the people that we would need to talk to, we would have to do some research to figure out who they are and chase them down to be able to figure out how that...
Yeah, well, we'd have to do that. And if the retention period is seven years and you take seven off of 2,000, well, they did the audit in 2018, I believe. So that means they should have records back to 2011 or 2012, which is in the period that they did the audit.
Right, but we do have the records from 2010 forward.
I have the accounting system back to 2008, I can access. The records that were from the accounting system prior to 2008.
So, I mean, what we're trying to...
I want us to put it to bed.
I would like to put it to bed too, but I need to understand where to start and who to talk to in order to do that. That's all I'm saying. I don't disagree with you that we should figure out what happened, but who do we talk to and how do we find out the information? I mean...
Well, I mean, I think the other question is, who do you want to do that investigation as well?
Well, that would have to be probably another forensic audit. Maybe mainly since they're familiar with the bond forensic audit. They could do that.
There was discussions in the first forensic audit concerning the bond with the township manager and some of the board members, I believe, at the time. Unfortunately, the solicitor at the time is passed on and was unable to be interviewed. But those interviews happened already as far as I'm aware of. And I believe it was a lot of, I don't really remember, that was 10-plus years ago.
But some of those people that worked here when those books should have been here are still alive and some of them are still working. They could be, we could discuss with them what they know, you know?
I don't disagree with that. I'm just trying to figure out, we need to get the list of who that is, is all I'm saying.
Part of the bond claim, the $300,000 we were discussing earlier, is a public official's bond claim, not a debt bond, a bond like an insurance bond. We already went, I'm going to use the word, and I don't want to use this, but I can't think of another word, after those people and their public officials' bond for the things that were done, not by the book, we're going to say. This would be trying them twice almost, Chad, I'm going to say. You know what I mean? They've already interviewed those folks. We've gone against the public officials' bond for some decisions that were made and some things that were done that did not meet the guidelines of the bond. This is kind of opening a can of worms that was already closed.
I don't see it that way. The bonds are one issue, the books and records are a separate issue. We're not trying to try anyone. We're trying to find out what happened with these books. Because if we lost those books, are we going to lose the next set of books that we have? Why not? Why not?
Well, we haven't lost any since then.
Well, I don't know. I can't see anything.
Well...
Only one person, only one supervisor has access to our ERP system, right?
To the best of our knowledge, we haven't lost anything since then, but I think what we need...
Her mine does, I mean, the auditors do testing every year and we find the records, yes.
But what we need to do, again, is that we need to sit down, we need to talk about this and we need to figure out, who do we need to talk to? Is that right?
Right, well, and I think potentially you have a situation where at the end of the day, people may not remember what happened 14 years prior in terms of a set of records. But I mean, it's up to the board if they want to conduct that investigation or not.
I wish I had the luxury of forgetting what happened to 2.7 million dollars. I really do.
They didn't, it's not... Please don't lead the public to believe that 2.7 million dollars is missing. That is not what happens. There is a paper set of financials that, from 2005 to 2008, that we couldn't put our hands on somewhere in a paper filing system in this building. That's what happened. We already remedied the 2.7 million dollars of bond proceeds that were not used according to what the bond stated they should have been used for.
You could go on and on about this, but as a taxpayer, living in Exeter Township, I would like to know what happened to those books.
Well, as soon as we can figure that out, we will all know.
But to what end? To what end? What is the purpose of all of finding records from 2005 to 2008 and interviewing people for those things?
I think that, I mean, quite honestly, I think that I know where you want to go. You want to find the books and find out what happened. We would all like to know that, that at this point, we're trying to figure out, how do we go about making that happen?
Look, the supervisors that were on duty at that time, the employees that were working here at the time, they had an obligation to this community to protect our assets, to use the assets as we were directed to use them, which we did not do. And we have a duty to find out if we can, okay? I understand what you're saying. If we can find out what happened to those books, because the books were not the focus of the forensic audit. The focus was on the audit, the bond proceeds and what we did with those, not the books.
We're saying the same thing. I'm saying to you, I would like to know what happened to the books as well. What I'm trying to figure out is how do we get there? That's all I'm talking about. I'm not disagreeing with you, but we need to figure out how to get there. And to Chad's point, if we go back and talk to people about things that happened in 2006, I doubt very seriously that everybody's going to sit down and say, oh, I can tell you exactly what happened. It's not that clear. I can't remember 14 years ago in explicit detail, and I don't think anybody in this room can. So we need to sit down, figure out how do we address this, and then work our way back there. Otherwise, because we could sit here until 12 o'clock tonight, the records aren't going to show up.
Not, but I was here in 2000.
So where are they?
I have no idea.
Well, you're going to get a whole lot of that answer.
And you don't know where they were.
They were all put downstairs.
Okay. And somehow they got us that box that, you know what, I'm tired of sitting down here, I'm going to grow legs and I'm going to get out of here.
I have a lot of questions to myself.
Yeah, it's a lot of questions. But my point is, is that we don't have, right now, we don't have a street to go down to find out what happened to those records, yet. So we're going to keep working on it. But you got it here, we talked about it, it's on the record that we're going to continue to work on it, and that's what we have to do. All right? Monthly reports. Golf report. Is there a golf report?
Golf report shows that we're losing, we lost through March 31st. We lost, according to this, $6,500. Of course, that's overstated because we didn't earn all the...
We didn't earn much because of not playing.
No, it's much more than $6,000, but at least on a cash basis, we lost $6,523.
All right.
And to give you an idea of the magnitude of that, we had revenue year-to-date of just $108,000 and we spent $115,000.
Yeah, okay. Sure accounts receivable report. You got any information, are we doing, I mean, I know you sent out a chart.
Yeah. We're just under 450 accounts, I believe it is, 449 accounts. Portnoy, the firm that we've contracted with, just literally last week, started their collection efforts. So I believe letters are in the mail, I'm going to state. So we've not received any funds yet from their collection efforts. What we've received so far is just from our own in-house collection efforts.
Okay. Thank you. Department reports, chief.
Just a few quick things. I'd like to remind residents, when they're going to our big box stores, to make sure that they lock their doors and please take your purse or any valuables with you outside the car. We've heard a few instances where thieves are going up and down through the parking lots at some of our big box stores and looking for purses or other valuables that are left in their vehicles and trying doors or in some cases, smashing windows. So please make sure if you are going to one of the stores, retail locations, that you take any valuables with you. Take your purse with you. Even if you think, okay, I'm going to leave my purse in the car and throw a coat over it, they'll notice that and they'll still try your car to take your valuables. Also, in the Crestwood area, we had a few cases where residents are leaving their car doors unlocked and people are going through and trying doors and looking for valuables inside of unlocked vehicles. So again, please lock your doors and if you notice anything suspicious, dial 911 so we can get our officers out there. Lorraine Elementary had a glow-in-the-dark Easter event and we sent an officer over there and there was about 350 kids that our officer interacted with. Our officer had a good time. One of the things I've discussed here numerous times is all the different scams that are targeting our older residents and our seniors here in the township. We'll be hosting with the library, a Don't Get Scammed seminar. That's going to be Wednesday, April 27th, at 11:00 a.m. at the library. I'd encourage anyone that wants to attend to please attend. I think you'll find it very informative. Make sure you get out there. And I'd like to thank the Girl Scouts who dropped off two huge boxes of cookies for our officers. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Chief, one question. I was out just kind of perusing social media the other day, which I very rarely do, and there was a comment out there on Nextdoor about somebody ringing a doorbell and they put on Nextdoor, hey, has anybody rang your doorbell? And wouldn't it a smart thing to do if that happened would be to alert the police that there's a stranger doing strange things in the neighborhood instead of putting it on Nextdoor?
Absolutely. So if you're, you know, sometimes kids will ring doorbells and run and they'll do things like that. I mean, it happens.
Right.
And so again, if someone's ringing your doorbell, you notice no one's there, give us a call, we'll come out. We'll check around your house, we'll make sure that you're safe. But yeah, make sure you give us a call and we'll check things out for you.
Thank you. Clarence?
Yeah, as far as the country club goes, I'm working, and I should come back to you at the next meeting, hopefully, regular meeting, for approval to go out on bid for the electrical, the painting and the camera system. That's all I got for now.
All right.
Okay, well, I have a couple of questions, Clarence. First of all, you're now the township manager, you're also the director of public works, and that's all that you have in your report?
Yeah, he's going to report on the highways.
Well, I, okay, well, I just, also, I asked, I requested, I think the board was here when I requested a written report each two weeks to the board on what's going on at the Redding Country Club, something, you know, a little bit more detailed than verbal. I'm a guy that likes to have things documented, it's in writing. And then there could be no dispute because there we are, just, we just had this big discussion, disputes about the books. Well, very little of it is in history in writing or we could go look at it, right? So, and this is something that I hope the board will join with me in asking department managers to provide us with a report at each of our regular board supervisor meetings. You know, they could come and certainly can verbally talk about it, but I would like a physical, hard copy report of what happened. So in two weeks, the only thing that happened at the Redding Country Club was you might get bids in the next meeting, two weeks from now. That's the only thing that's going on. We didn't have any repairs done up there, we didn't clean up anything. Because I think in the distribution report, there's some stuff where we bought piping or something to fix something up at the...
That was back in February.
Okay. So you know, I...
We just got the bill. That's, it was repaired back in February.
Those are the things we don't know about. And I'd like, and I also asked us to keep a tally of how much we're spending on the Redding Country Club to bring it back to its, you know, top condition so that if we can go somewhere else to get someone to reimburse us for these costs for allowing it to lay there for five years completely unused, we can do something. So that's one of the things I'm concerned about. And I hope will the board agree that we need written reports from our managers and from our township manager and...
Nothing wrong with that.
Okay, are we over there? You guys in agreement to that?
That's fine with me. I just had a question on the, you mentioned camera system we're getting quotes on? My question on the camera system, if something went on at the Redding Country Club and we needed reason to save video or maybe download it to a DVD, is that something the new system will be able to do?
Yeah, absolutely.
So if we specifically need a DVD, that would be something we could do?
Yeah.
Okay. Just making sure of that.
There's other systems out there and I hope we're researching them. I have one around my house. It's motion activated, it goes right to the cloud and it records whatever activated the motion and it saves it for you forever. And anyone from anywhere can access it. The thing we have up there now, you have to be in that room upstairs and you have to look at the monitor, okay?
That's why we're redoing it, right?
Okay, but, okay, but before we spend any money, I hope we're going to, the board's going to hear what...
Yeah, that's what he said.
What they're going to...
At the next meeting, talk about what he's going to do.
All right. So this is going to be a pretty long process.
I like the cloud idea, though.
Yeah. All right.
Got comments on the roads or public work?
I'm good with the country club now, yeah, thank you.
We've been working on storm drains in different areas. We've been doing piping on Evanda Line and where we had a storm issue. The pit was damaged over time, it's over 20 years old. We were also installing a catch basin with drain pipe at the truck run facility along the parking lot there where we always have a lot of water sitting, there's a lot of springs coming off the railroad bridge and stuff like that. So we were working on that. We are still street sweeping. We're not even halfway through our street sweeping yet. And we've been hoping that we can incorporate it for April 1st, so we could busy doing that.
Perfect.
You mean May 1st, maybe?
Actually, no, we just got it all done for April 1st.
April 1st, oh, gosh, okay.
There's a couple of things that we had to get...
I was going to say, what?
April 1st came and went.
You did, okay.
Any other reports from any departments? Becky?
Well, April 1st is kind of our deadline because of our bathrooms can open up in all the facilities. And that's when our pavilions open up. So the Dunn Center has been very busy, you know, all year round, but the outside parks are going to be more used now as we get into our nicer season. Just to let you know that our Easter egg scramble got rained delayed from this past Saturday. It'll be coming up this Saturday on the 16th. We hope people will be able to join us. We do have a backup plan in case we get rained out again, but we are really hoping for nice weather on Saturday. Starting tomorrow, we are having regular Tai Chi classes in the Dunn Barn. So if you're, I think we could all use some meditation, moving meditation classes. So that's going to be starting Tuesday mornings. And additional classes and programs for all ages are up on our website.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Good, okay. All right, so we'll move to public comment. Mr. Whitehawk?
Thank you, everyone. Fred Whitehawk, West 47th Street. Two years ago, I, two years ago and last year, I attended a Veterans Expo that was sponsored by State Representative Katie Muth out of Montgomery and Chester County, down at the Oaks. down at the Oaks Philadelphia Expo Center. She had 30 different veterans organizations, organizations that help veterans attend that. And she had a big, big turnout. And we went there. They gave us a meal. Okay, I think Mission BBQ down there handled all that for us. And it was really a good thing. Well, last year, I called our state senator, Judy Schwank, and let her know about it. Last week, I got an email and a phone call from Tom Gumbar, who works for her. They're gonna have the same type of thing here on May 19th at one of the buildings over Alvernia College. People just need to go contact Senator Schwank's office, either online or to her office number, and get registered. And you can bring a guest if you want to. But it's open to all veterans and if they want to bring a guest, you can. And I think it's a really good thing. Like I said, I benefited from it, but like down there in Oaks, everything was down that way and I'm up here. So, but that's what I had to say this week.
Thank you very much, Mr. Whitehawk. That's good information. Mike Chapina?
Thanks, Mr. Staples. My name is Mike Chapina from 100 East 36th Street. I'm just gonna sort of use this opportunity real quickly to just get some clarification on some stuff so that when Jerry and I are sitting at home writing tonight, we'll have some answers. Is there an update on the RFP for the township manager position?
Sure. It's not an RFP. It's just an advertisement for the township manager. We have been getting candidates. I know a number have submitted that the board is currently evaluating. In terms of the recruitment company that we discussed at the last meeting, I did reach out to a number of firms. I did not hear back from any of them, unfortunately. So I'm hoping to follow up again this week and hopefully get some movement on that.
Thank you. And just a question for the board. You know, the school district is in search for a superintendent right now and they've conducted a community survey and will have the community involved in some aspects. I was wondering if the township would, boards of supervisors would consider community involvement in that search?
Board?
To what extent?
I think you would have to figure that out, but if there was, if there was a survey that was conducted, if there was an opportunity to observe interviews in public, if that's possible, I, you know, I think that it's just, you know, it is the sort of the chief representative of the day-to-day activities for the people of the community. So just a suggestion. I mean, it's what the school district is doing. And I know sometimes people like to come in and bring school district stuff here, so I thought I'd, I'd mention that. Is there an update on the outstanding ADA complaint that was brought up previously?
It's still currently in mediation.
Okay, so that's currently being mediated. What would the remedy for something like that be?
I mean, the beauty, the beautiful thing about an ADA mediation is it really is anything that the person complaining desires. So if the person is satisfied with painting the country color purple, then, and that's the remedy they want, that would be an option.
Okay, all right, thanks. Regarding the visit to the conference, the cost of the conference, is there a cost associated with the conference and who's going?
Yeah, there's, I happen to have a brochure. Do you know the cost of it?
Well, no, I was just gonna say, I'm gonna send in a request that they waive any of the fees that we have to pay. How about that?
The...
Good luck with that.
The member... The member rate, which I believe we are members, is 175 per person. I believe there's three of us going.
Okay, thanks. And mileage and the whole deal, you'll get all that, those expenses as well?
It wouldn't be something I'm gonna submit for. I don't believe...
I'm not turning it down. I'm one of the people going on. I won't turn it down.
And Mike, a free lunch on Berks County, too.
Yeah.
There you go.
It really is, Mike, it really is a great place for supervisors, especially if they're new. You can be able to go up and learn more all the time.
Absolutely. I think that anytime that somebody can get that experience, I think it's great. The, Mr. Bell, you abstained on the wastewater proceeds. Is that because of your affiliation with Fidelity? Or is there a particular reason? I know, I don't know if you still have to do that, Mr. Schnee. If you abstain, you have to fill out a form that explains your abstention.
If there's a conflict of interest, and I don't think there is a conflict of interest here in the true sense. I think out of abundance of caution and respect for his business profession.
That was the conclusion we had reached. That probably technically not a need because my employer fidelity is not part of the RFP, but I made a on-the-record statement that said if ever there'd be a financial firm selected, I would abstain, just in an abundance of caution and technically re-upping with the current custodian is in a way selecting a firm. Because we are in fact selecting the firm we're already doing business with. So that was the reason for clarity, but...
Well, thank you for that explanation. I recall you having said that. I figured that, but I thought, say it again and...
Yeah, I appreciate it. It's just one of those things I'd rather be safe than, so...
Okay, thank you very much.
Dave and I participated actively in the process and then I just abstained from the vote.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, supervisor reports. Mr. Hughes?
Well, I have a few things I'd like to talk about. The first thing I'd like to, first thing I'd like to make a note of is I, I support the Animal Rescue League. Unfortunately, Exeter Township does not. We have Net Sanctuary, which I would like Net Sanctuary to either be at our budget meetings or just provide us with a report on their activities on our behalf for 2021 and for the first quarter of 2022. This year, we're paying them $9,000 to do nothing, okay? Because this rabies alert came out, the Animal Rescue League contacted me. It was in the paper in the Redding Eagle on April 10th. And there's been one confirmed rabies in St. Lawrence and they've caught a couple of other animals that they had to destroy. So what I'm concluding is that these cats, it's all cats, lots of cats, and they haven't listened to the fact that they're not supposed to cross into Exeter Township territory without paying a small fee. So I just want everybody to realize there's a rabies problem out there, okay? Then I want to briefly touch on the D C, the D C E D report, which has recently been completed. And what is really disconcerting to me, and I'm sure my colleagues feel the same way, is the fact that there were two accounting errors. And we're going to have to restate our beginning fund balances in the general fund and write off $1.8 million, accounting error, for unavailable revenue. And there's a government policy for that. Also, another one for the trust and agency funds for $18,783, okay? So we don't have quite as much money as we thought we had. And $1.8 million, it's a lot of, it's a lot of do re mi. I also looked into the quarterly newsletter. And we are very generous when other people come and ask us to waive fees. But when it comes to sending out a quarterly newsletter to our homeowners in Exeter Township, the answer is it costs too much money. So I went to Rick's Printing, who used to do our stuff before. Jennifer Savage provided us with an old invoice. And I got the new quotes from her and it cost us roughly 40 cents to print the newsletter. 9,250 newsletters and about 19 cents postage to mail them out. So roughly 59 cents per household to send them a nice newsletter every quarter, okay? But we're not gonna do it because we're not gonna waive their fee. They're gonna have to pay for that newsletter if they want it, right? So that's how cheap we are now. I just wanted to let you know, we could start doing that stuff, but no one is, you know, gonna back me up on that one, so, but I think we should. Right now, with our e-newsletter, and I haven't heard any new data, we're only reaching 1,500 people. And we have 9,000 homes in the township that hold 25,000 people and I, you know, 59 cents a quarter.
It's my understanding, though, that if someone wanted a paper copy, they could get a paper copy.
They can, but it's also my understanding that there's not a lot of those people out there. So the differential between the 1,500 getting the e-newsletter and, and they're not getting anything is still rather high, you know? So, but that's okay. We're not known very much for communicating to our residents.
At least not all of them.
We don't need, hey, spending 59 cents on them? No way, okay? So I also want to talk about the utility fund. I just got that report and it looks like we're taking out loans. It had a $13,000 deficit at the end of February. Then all of a sudden, in March or sometime, it went positive. And it looks like we had two loans in there for March. One, I think I have that report here somewhere, but I don't have it in front of me now. But we're, I don't know if they were transfers from other funds or if they were loans from the bank, but if they were transfers from other funds, we can't do that by March 31st. And if they were loans, I don't know that this board approved any of those loans. Did you guys approve any loans that I don't know about?
But did you, did you ask any questions that other people who were doing this, what that was?
Uh, I think that they would report that to us if they had that activity, would they not, or should?
If, if the activity happened and you didn't know about it, would you, did you ask a question?
Well, I just found out about it today, very late, okay? Because I asked for it in the morning and I didn't get it till the afternoon. So maybe, I think, Jen, you provided that to me. Can you kind of tell us what's going on there? Here it is. So we, we moved in temporary loans of $40,000 and $14,000. That's $55,000. The beginning balance from the last statement was $283. And these, these loans came in at February 28th and March 28th.
The email I also provided with that report explained to you what happened. We are always in a deficit in that fund in the first quarter because taxes don't come in until March through, March and April, we get the majority of taxes. That fund supports the streetlights and fire hydrants in the township and it is all tax-funded. So in the beginning of the year, we have no revenues. We do temporary loans between funds, which then get cleared up.
No, that's not, that's not allowed, number one. Number two, when we do the budget, we're supposed to make sure that there's adequate funds in each of the funds to pay for everything before the taxes come in. That's why the Second Class Township says no transfers during the first three months of the year. I don't care if you call it a loan or you call it, call it whatever you want. It's a transfer that you...
The township has historically been doing this for many years. Before I got here, none of the auditors who have ever reviewed our books have ever found any sort of issue with it.
I think everyone knows what I'm talking about. So, thank you. I also want to remind the board members that, again, on April 18th, we're gonna have a walkthrough on the clubhouse, okay, with an executive chef and another guy who evaluates, you know, designing these types of places. Also, I'd like to ask the board to provide me with a couple of dates where they can, we can organize and get together to tour another building. I'm not gonna mention that what the building is, but we have an opportunity to tour another building that we might be interested in. I may, also, as I mentioned, the Sanctuary, Net Sanctuary, I'd like to get their reports. I also am interested in this dated January 27th, the engagement letter from Herbine. I finally got a copy of this, I guess, last week. Isn't that right, Jennifer? And I queried my, my colleagues here and they said they've never seen this engagement letter. However, it's addressed to the board of supervisors and we've never seen it. Can you explain that?
Engagement letter was delivered to me the exact same day that you asked me for it.
It's dated January 27th. I just asked you last week for it.
It was given to me in paper copy the day you were here to meet with Chris Turtell.
And it looks like, like we do a lot of things, we sign documents and we don't date them. We do not date documents that we sign. This is, this is driving me crazy. So I don't know when you really got it.
Maybe you're not believing. It's up to you.
Finally, I have a question for Clarence. I got a communication from you, Clarence, and I don't quite understand it, so maybe you can clarify for me. You said that since this should be a board of supervisors' decision, we should get the input from the rest of the board on this matter and that you copied the rest of the board. And I'm not sure what the matter is that you felt I needed the board of supervisors to approve. Could you...
On the reports that you want?
Of reports that I wanted, okay.
That's what you just talked about.
Yeah. So, and I, I want to ask my colleagues and our learned attorney here, do I have to get your approval for a report?
You don't need my approval for a report, but I didn't need the report, so I, I, I'm good with...
Well, I'll explain what the report was, okay? I'll explain what...
You don't need to explain it to me. I'm telling you, you don't need to speak for me. If you want that information, that's good for you.
Okay, great, great.
You don't need to get it for me.
And I also, and what it is, the reports for our budget meeting. And I asked the board, I said, "Hey, guys and gals, have any of you given the administration direction on how we want to see this, how we want to present it?" And no one replied to it. And I said, "So in lieu of anyone giving direction, I gave Clarence the direction on what was expected when we have this budget meeting so that it works out well." One of them is hard copy by the managers so that we have it in our hands and we can read it and look at the various line items with the explanations. And this is where he said, "Well, I need to get the board's approval," okay? And he just verified I don't need it. And then he says that Jen and I met with the police chief Thursday morning and we went over how we can best explain last year's budget. So you told me I gotta get approval for it and then you tell me, "Well, independently, you've already decided what I want." Can you explain that, Clarence? Why would you do that?
I didn't say that.
It's written right here. You want to read it? Want to read it?
I sent that to everybody. I got two responses. I said they didn't, they wanted it the way we did, the way we, we explained it to them, so...
I've done a million budget reviews in my life. I'm sure you have too, Carl.
I had three board members tell me this is what they wanted, so that's...
No, I asked the board to get back to me if you had a problem with what I was requesting because no one gave him direction. And I didn't see anything from every, any board member deviating from what I requested. It's very simple. It really is. I requested that they look at any line items that are plus or minus 10% deviation from the budget.
Just to be clear, I probably won't reply to any email that has this all on it. It's just not something I'm gonna do.
Well, I didn't send you any, I didn't send the email to you. I sent it to Clarence and he was, you know, came...
I was gonna say, you didn't send that to him?
No, 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 no. But it was in here and it said, "Clarence, send this to the board." Because I, I'm not allowed to directly really talk to all of you at one time. So I sent it to Clarence. I have it here somewhere where I said, "Hey, please share this with the other board members," okay?
How do you know we didn't respond to him?
Well, because I say in my email that if there's anyone that isn't, doesn't agree with what I'm requesting, they let you know so that you can let me know. And he didn't...
And I didn't do that. You're correct.
Yeah, you didn't do that. So how, if you did, I didn't get that information. So what I'm saying is unless you guys have a better process of evaluating actual results to budget, I'm requesting for all of us to have a hard copy because once we verbally talk about it and three, five months down the line when we're doing the budget, like Carl says, we don't, we, we're gonna forget things. So it's good to have it in hard copy, number one, with the explanations as the, as the manager of the department goes through the issues. It's that simple. with the explanations, as the, as the manager of the department goes through the issues. It's that simple.
I don't like hard copies, so I, I don't work off hard copies. As you can all see, I'm working on my computer. But, and I, to me, knowing they met, as, they're adults, so it's a working session, which means if we need additional information, we certainly can continue to ask for them. So I, I thought, whatever they come up with, I'd like to hear it, because they know that we're looking to examine the budget. So I'd like to treat them all as adults and have them come to us, and then again, if we need additional information-
What's that got to do, what's that got to do with requesting a certain format?
I don't need to direct them. I'm just saying, I'm telling you my opinion. Am I not allowed to tell you my opinion? Just because I don't agree with you doesn't mean it's wrong.
Well, I have to tell you, this is my, this is my, this is my supervisor's report. I'll listen to something you have to say, but I'm going to ask you a question if I don't understand what you're talking about. I don't understand, because, because if you want it in electronic form, that's fine. But I like it in hard copy. You like it in hard copy, don't you?
Oh, that's great.
Okay, so it's fine. You can have it. Anyway, we'll serve it up any way you want it. You know, you want a little-
Want to continue with your report? Come on, please.
So the question I'm asking here is, maybe she has a different process to do the budget to actuals and looking at the items. Does anybody have a different way to do it? You have a different way to do it?
I want to look at what's been spent.
Okay.
I want to look at what's been budgeted, what's been spent, whether we're over or under in the budget. And I think 10% is an appropriate number.
Now, if you don't want to do a hard copy and you want to do an electronic file, that's, that's the same thing to me, okay? But it's got to be evidenced, and we're, and I don't want someone to come in here and just talk about it verbally, and then we, we don't have any supporting evidence. Exactly. So if you don't want it hard copied, that's fine, you know? It's not that hard to understand. So fortunately, folks, I will not bother you any longer. I am completed with my report. Thank you.
Mr. Hughes? Ms. Kertcher?
I just want to say to, about this, whatever was going on from 2000, before 2005, I'm glad that I said something so Jennifer, you could reply to me that I should know because I was there. I was, and why didn't you ask me any questions? I've been telling everybody to, that, listen, that I know what really happened there. Talk to me. And not one person did. So it's just a little upsetting to see stuff that comes out all the time that isn't true. Anyone trying to correct it. But I want to thank everyone for persevering this meeting. I know it was a very long meeting, and I'm glad that you're continuing to come, because we do have a lot of things we're going to accomplish. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bell?
Just two things I was thinking of for the report. One was, many venues I've been at lately have been basically what I would call cashless. It was born out of basically the COVID era, and I thought, wow, this is not going to work so great for tips and gratuities and certain people. My ad hoc experience or anecdotal, I think, is the word I was looking for, experience is it seems to be working actually pretty good. So I was just teeing up for the proverbial wheels turning, that maybe that would be a way we could handle the golf club operations. So I'm not making a motion here today, because there might be an aspect that is unintended, like maybe everybody brings five bucks for the golf ball bucket. So I'm, I'm just throwing out, though, that, an idea, especially when we're between management firms, is with notice, a cashless operation might be something we could kick around as a board. So I will likely ask for it on a future agenda. I just wanted to toss it out in my report in case in the interim, anybody has an idea of why that's a bad idea for a gratuity reason or something like that, that I'm not thinking of. But on its face, I like the idea of cashless in that type of operation. So that was item one. And item two, thank you for all involved on getting an iteration of the RFP, speaking of RFPs earlier, for the Redding Country Club. It's much appreciated. So now that it's out there, the residents will likely notice that we would take an RFP reply that includes the golf operations or the food and beverage operations separately or combined, depending on the right entity. So we talk about inclusive township and helping out and what can various folks do. You may or may not know a golf operator I will submit in your sphere of influence. But, I mean, if you do, great. But many of you might know some food and beverage contacts. So help get the word out, is the point of my comment. Now that it's out there, it's on the website. If you know anybody that would be possibly interested, we'd love to have a few names to work through. So now that it's on the website, it's sort of official, so help spread the word if you're so inclined. We would be obliged to get even food and res, food and beverage names in the hopper. So those are my two points for today. Thank you, Carl.
Thank you. Well, Ms. Reese?
Just a couple of things. The Promenade property, I saw we had one Realtor reach out to see if we were interested. I was just curious. I think we should get some information on what the value would be, what the sale value would be, just so we have that information. And I was wondering if we had any additional inquiries, or was that the only one that came in, Clarence?
Yeah, I gave it to-
Okay. Okay. Just, I think it would be great to see what the market value is, so we know what we're looking at when we decide, you know, how we're going to proceed with that. The resolution for the fire advisory board, Chad, I know that's with you. So I think at some point, we've gotten a lot of inquiries. We're going to have to try to get that on the agenda so we can wrap that up and appoint the members. I saw the information came through on the AV equipment. Thanks to Will and Tina, it looked like they put that together. And if we do want to make any changes, just note that at some point, we need to get that on the agenda if we want to purchase additional equipment or whatever direction we want to go. I saw some of the figures were kind of high. I do know we can use ARP, you know, the ARPA fund for that, but still, you know, keep that in mind. Lastly, just, you know, it's important, township manager, got to get that position filled. And the RFP, too. I was happy to see that went out for the Redding Country Club. So that's all I got.
Thank you. I think, I mean, in reality, a lot of what we discussed tonight are things that we absolutely, positively have to look at and do. I mean, I think all the audit discussions and everything is, is right on point. But I think that we have three, and this is my opinion, not the board, and this is just Carl Staples' opinion. I think we have three major topics. One is the getting a township manager in place, because I think we are suffering without that. Not that Clarence is not doing his best, but that's not his wheelhouse. So we need to make sure that we get a top first-class township manager. We need to get the Redding Country Club up and running. And we need to, in my opinion, to your point earlier, figure out exactly where we need to price the Promenade and then get it sold, because that's money that's just sitting there waiting for us to pick it up. If we're not going to use the property, we should rid ourselves of the property as soon as, as soon as possible. The other thing I'm going to tell you-
Can I, can I make a comment about that?
Yes, sir.
I'm not sure we need to be in a hurry to sell that property for one reason that I've already told you about. But number two is that we haven't hit the highest inflation rates yet. You guys don't understand yet what's coming down the pike. This is a huge gigantic storm that's coming. So the longer that we hold on to that property, the higher the price we're going to get for it. I mean, that's just the way it works. So it doesn't eat a lot of food. You know, 55, 60,000 a year to pay the taxes and everything. But we will receive a much bigger amount of money if we just wait, maybe perhaps another year or so. That's why they want to grab it right now.
I didn't say I wanted to rush. I just said I wanted to make sure I know what we can get out of it. And if, if we get a number here and we know it can go up, then that's what we should do.
But just, just remember, everybody seems to be sensitive on spending money on things like, like quarterly newsletters. But it also will cost money to get that property appraised, all right? And, and getting it appraised and not doing anything is, just seems foolish, you know? We could, we could extrapolate what that might be worth. I mean, we don't need to get an appraiser. We spent money on appraising property down near Trout Run with the intent of buying it, and we never bought it. But we spent thousands and thousands of dollars on appraisals. So please consider that.
I will do that. What I'm telling you is that those are my priorities, okay? Didn't say that they had to happen, and I need board support in order for them to happen. Everything-
Well, you've got, you've got that support at least on one side of the table here, okay? So we, we know that.
I got it on this side of the table, too.
Well, it depends. I don't agree with all your priorities.
Well, but you don't agree with a lot of things. I do, but that's beside the point.
I, I think, I think the number one priority is getting the, our house in order. That's got to be number one, okay? And number two is taking care of the space that we need for some, for our policemen. I mean, I think, I think the space issue will fix itself with the administration and engineering and zoning. So space is number two.
Okay. So thank you for this evening, ladies and gentlemen, and that's, and my report. I'll call the meeting at this adjournment.
Good night. Thank you.